We have our workshop. And I want to welcome Carol Cook, once again, from FSBA. And Cindy McClung for being our facilitator today. And everyone else, I hope you're well. So it's 1:01 PM and we'll begin the meeting with our agenda review. And so then at this time, I will hand it over to Dr. Atkins. Hi there, Dr. Atkins.
Good afternoon. It looks like Ms. Vaughn has her hand.
Oh, Ms. Vaughn. Yeah, hopefully, everybody got the note that I sent them late last night. I was just wondering why agenda for today is self evaluations. And then to that, it's our discussion of Dr. Atkins' evaluation that we did as a board. And then our self evaluation. It seems to me that that topic is incorrect. And as I said in the email that all you should have gotten, that I thought, you know, if members of the public or anybody is just perusing the agenda for today, they're just going to see self evaluation. I think that's misleading.
No, I think it says governance team, self evaluation. But Dr. Atkins is not a self evaluation. It's our board evaluation. I hear what you're saying, that it's all part of the governance team. So just if you go ahead and click on that back, you'll see that both the board self evaluation and the superintendent's evaluation done by the board and himself are part of the material there. So there is ample opportunity for discussion, I'm sure. And while we're at it, I'll just remind us all that when we have questions for discussion in an effort to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to share their, ask the questions or share their thoughts. Robert's rule says that we can get 10 minutes each and everybody gets a chance. Or our protocols say that we can do five minutes and have two terms. So let's try to keep that in mind so that we do have an opportunity for everyone to ask their questions and share their thoughts.
Okay, it was just a pre getting into today's agenda question. Why, it just seemed like a misleading topic. It's me being picky, but I just thought it should be subdivided. But.
Okay, but yes.
I understand what you're saying. I understand. We're all the governance team.
Yes.
I understand that, but I thought it was because the main part of the superintendent's is our evaluation. And I just thought it was misleading, but that's fine. Let's just move on.
Okay, thank you. Then let's move on. And at this time, Dr. Atkins, Ms. Gittens, we can't hear you, Ms. Gittens. Please unmute.
No, I had raised my hand.
I'm sorry.
About the topic that Ms. Vaughn just brought up. I had the same question. It's a concern that in previous years, we've had at least an hour for each topic. We've had an hour for, or at least 45 hours to an hour for our board self evaluation and for the superintendent's evaluation. And it has been listed as two separate things. The concern I have is that we have 60 minutes allotted for that discussion to include both our discussion and his discussion, when in the past, it's been at least an hour each. That is very concerning that we will be rushed to get answers done.
Yes, ma'am, I understand that. And I will say this, that we do have Ms. Cook from FSBA with us today. And so our self evaluation and the other information will be carried over to our fourth session of master training, where we can continue the discussion. And Ms. Cook, would you like to add to that, please?
Yeah, let me see if I can clarify things a little bit. This is not an opportunity for us to talk strictly about the board evaluation and then strictly about the superintendent's evaluation. If you want to do that, that's at a separate time. What we're going to be doing today is gathering information that will roll into our next onsite. Now, that will include, we're not even going to be doing next steps. We're going to be generating information this time. Next steps will be in the next discussion when we're together again. And that'll be a four hour opportunity that we'll have to discuss that. So right now, during that one hour, it's our opportunity to gather information, strengths and weaknesses in each of those dimensions, and then gather all of that and prepare for the next workshop. Okay?
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Then, Ms. Gittens, did you have another comment?
Yes, I did. The thing is, I don't know if everyone else knew about this change and about having FSBA involved. When I found out about FSBA and that this is going to count toward master board was when I went on the meeting on Friday and Ms. Cook was there. And let me just say, it worked out well because we did have both sides. But in the past, when we have talked about training that we're all going to be involved in, it's something that is brought before the entire board. And the entire board is aware and makes that decision. I can recall talking about, okay, who's going to, who do we want to have? How is this going to work? Do we want FSBA? Do we want somebody else? All of that type of discussion normally goes on as a team to decide. And our, at least my knowledge of how this has changed and everything is because I looked at the agenda on Board Docs the night before the meeting. And then I didn't realize it was changing this one as well. And that what Ms. Cook just said, we were not informed of that. And this is part of the issue that some board members know things and others don't. And if we're going to work as a team in a team effort, we all have to be included in things that affect all of us.
Yes, ma'am, thank you very much. And if you look at the responsibilities of the chair, setting the agenda with the superintendent is one of them. And we had a unique opportunity to, we had been talking with FSBA about continuing our master board training. And so in those negotiations, which we did send a memo out about, we had an opportunity to have Ms. Cook with us and to count some of our work that we're doing here as part of that training. So we took advantage of that. And so if we can move on with our workshop agenda review, and then we have people waiting, the RSM people are waiting in the waiting room for their part. So we don't want to take any more time now, but we'll have ample time later on in the meeting to discuss anything that you need to say. So thank you. Okay, let's, I see no other hands, so let's try one more time, Dr. Atkins. Here you go.
All right, the first question is executive services approval of official minutes in regular school board meetings. The question is, where are the additional documents? And is that something you were going to address, Ms. Fisher?
I'm not so sure. Let me just get into, can you, whose question is that? I don't know what you mean.
It's Ms. Gittens' questions. And it says, please do not deny any answer to this question because it's not a numbered consent item on the agenda. It has to do with the agenda review as a whole. I know we discussed the additional addition of the questions to the minutes of our workshops. And I was basically told no staff because the answers were not thorough answers and would not be, could be misunderstood. However, when these documents are sent electronically, printed and discussed in a public meeting, they become a public record and legally must be available to the public. Wouldn't it be easier to add them to the minutes than to have to do as public record requests the taxpayers must pay for? And my understanding is that Susan Johnson had weighed in. And so I don't know if that's.
Yes, yes, and we did discuss that. So I think we, at one of our recent meetings, we had a discussion about that. And because it is recorded, there's no mistake about the accuracy of the conversations. And the members of the public can access those videos at any time without cost. So it wouldn't necessitate a public records request. I think that the people, the office people, the board office manager and the executive secretaries agree that it's very difficult to try to get a verbatim written copy of the minutes when the reason that we have the taping, the videotaping is that then there is no room for error and everyone can see what was said by each member of the board and the public.
Go ahead.
I don't know what you mean by additional documents, but please, Ms. Gittens. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. The reason for the question is that there are times, such as the last meeting, I had questions on there that Ms. Patrico said, we need to table those to the next time. And some of my questions were never answered, but they were on the list. I had been told that they would be answered, but it was deemed that they did not have anything to do with items on the consent. And I tried to explain that they did and how they did, but I was overruled. So I had questions that still were not discussed.
And then, so then please feel free to bring those questions forward during good of the order. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
And next one, consent, academic services approval of the virtual high school graduation schedule for 1920. The question is, if there are board members not assigned to a graduation, I will agree to doing Riverdale and East if necessary. And I think.
So may I, may I respond? So then the answer to that is that each one of us will be doing two graduations. Mr. Mangan and Ms. Johnson and I completed that list this morning. I want to thank Ms. Gittens for accommodating that and Ms. Giovinelli and Ms. Jordan, because they had multiple schools. So at this point, and I think I can tell you now that we have, okay, so I'll go by district. I'm doing Ida Baker and Cape High. Melissa will be doing Fort Myers High School in Cypress. Chris will be doing Dunbar and Estero. Debbie will be doing North and Mariner. Gwen will be doing East and Riverdale. Betsy, Island Post and Lee High, and I didn't get a chance to send the memo out yet. And Kathleen Lee Virtual and South, so that we each have an equitable representation at our high school graduations this year. Ms. Giovinelli.
And just for the, for the public to understand, there, we have voted for, this is for the virtual schools, right? And this is, and also, the virtual school, Lee Virtual School wasn't on our initial list and it has been added. So that's a little bit different. And I just wanted to let the public know the difference.
Okay, yeah, and it is one of our high schools. And Mrs. Morgan has graciously agreed to confer the diplomas and receive the class. So, and we were trying to have an equitable representation. And the staff needed to get on with the scheduling for the taping of the comments and the receiving of the class. So I think now we're good to go. And I really want to appreciate everyone for pitching in and cooperating and being willing to share equally. Thank you.
Okay.
Ms. Gittens.
Okay, I'm just a little confused about Lee Virtual School, too. Aren't we all taping something for Lee Virtual School, was my understanding?
Well, I know that there's an invitation out from Mr. Schilling to all of the board members and all of the elected officials locally. I'm not sure exactly how that's going to play out, but our official board representative to the Lee Virtual School virtual graduation is Mrs. Morgan. Thank you. Okay, Dr. Atkins.
Ms. Vaughn has her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I keep looking at my list for the hand up and I didn't see that. Ms. Vaughn, please.
Get through participants in the future. I just, I just want to say, thank you to everybody who shared. I know that last year, which was fine, I did only charter schools. And this year, I wasn't put on the agenda at all. And frankly, I was a little bit disturbed when I asked Susan about it. And she said, well, the schedule was done before, and I guess this is for the face to face, before the COVID, and that she had done the whole thing with Simmons. And, you know, moving forward, I guess when we get into board, the shared opportunities that we can discuss that more. But, yeah, it's, the two of us who are at large members, it is nice to be able to participate in at least one, one of our schools. So I appreciate the generosity of those that had three schools and each donated one discipline to me who had no schools. But, so thank you.
All about the teamwork. Thank you.
Okay, next item, F1. This is the financial advisor. Their question is, is this an estimated expenditure of $85,000? I'd like to see an updated projection from Ford Company with various scenarios when we lose funding for the sales tax. Similar to our budget update, what are their plan? Or what is their plan? So Dr. Decimours, I believe, is going to respond. I believe.
Yes, I am. I'm here. How are you?
Hi, Dr. Decimours, welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Good afternoon, all members of the board, Dr. Atkins. So the question was whether could Ford and Associates come and give us an update on sales tax projections? So those projections actually are not done by Ford and Associates. Those are done by internal staff at the budget department. We did speak to those briefly in the last board briefing that we did. We plan on bringing some additional information related to updated projections for sales tax projects at our next workshop with you all, which is in June. So the, the, the sales tax projections themselves are what our internal staff does. It is outside of the scope of Ford and Associates. But what they do, what they will do is take those projections and then help us structure the best debt issuances that we can based on the revenue that we are projecting to make sure that our debt payments are within the parameters that we would like them to be. So that really is the scope of how Ford and Associates work with us. Ms. Gittens?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Decimours, for that answer. I was just thinking about, since we had taken out cops for building on some of our schools and how that's going to be affected. So I look forward to that report and projection as to see how we will be affected financially going forward. And thank you.
All right, next is I, I2 approval of the school bell times for 2020, 2021. The question is, what happened to the pilot five by five at Dunbar in Eastlake County? We've still not gotten a full explanation of the process. Two schools that still have five by fives, why? And why is it called a pilot when all other schools are going seven periods? Are the bell times different for four by fours versus the five by fives? So I know operations, academic services are going to answer that. The short answer is, you know, when we, when we said that we were not going to move forward with the proposed schedule changes, that was all schedules. And I think we made that clear, I believe, in the, in the discussion. The five by five does take additional time. That's because the, you have to, you have to make sure that you have enough seat time to earn the credit. So anyway, again, operations and academic services, I believe, was going to respond a little bit more fully. And then as we move forward this summer, of course, we'll see how things go with COVID. But, you know, our, our intention was to continue to work on a schedule that's going to increase learning time for students, for all students across the district. And, you know, that's something that we were going to involve shareholders in throughout the summer. But anyway, Dr. Spiro and Dr. Savage are here. So gentlemen.
There. Ms. Gittens, just because I know this was your question specifically, was there anything in Dr. Atkins' response that you'd like some more specific information about to clarify?
No, basically, I know that it was decided we would make the change to seven periods next year. So, and I do recall hearing that. What I was confused about is, in the original proposition, it was going to be that all the high schools were going to seven periods, except for two that were going to a five by five. And I had questioned that in another meeting to find out, okay, are we still doing that? And if those two are pilot, why are we piloting something and yet changing everyone to the seven periods? I was just confused about that. So now that we say next year, we are going to seven periods, are those two schools next year going to a five by five? Or have we totally scrapped the five by five altogether and everyone is going to seven periods? That's all I'm asking.
Well, first of all, let me, let me respond to a piece of it. And I think that now that we have said that for the 2021 school year, we're not going to make any changes to the schedules and bell times, that gives us an opportunity this summer to, to continue to study what is the best schedule for all schools. And that's what our intention is to do. Remember, we put that timeline together for the board. So we'll keep you updated throughout the summer, but we'll be coming back to you really with a preliminary recommendation in August, I believe. And then a final recommendation that we hope to make in November so that we can move forward in December during, you know, what's normally the open houses and so forth for students. So having said that, we do believe that the five by five, because it provides more options and more time, is, is an excellent schedule. And in a best case scenario, it would probably be the best schedule for us to implement. But we are a large district and transportation with that particular schedule is challenging. And so it may take some time with proximity and so forth to be able to work toward that. Having said that, all of that, there still might be an opportunity for another blended model that we potentially could put together and bring to the board. So this gives us time to come up with what I think will be even a better solution for the 21, 22 school year.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. I see Ms. Jordan's hand up. Please, Debbie.
Thank you. My question is just on that, just real quick, is Success Academy? I know that I've asked about that before because I've been going over there quite a bit. But I know that they were hoping to be on the same schedule as the high schools due to the fact that a lot of their students, they are older and then they get out of school and then they go to work. But I saw, I've seen that it's back to like the middle school. But I saw I seen that it's back to like the middle school time where they're going to get out at four o'clock is, and I know it's the the busing and everything. Is there any way that we could switch that out or is it too late now? That's my question.
Great.
Dr. Atkins, you want me to respond to that?
My my response would be, you know, and and you can correct me if if I say something incorrectly, you can correct me. Yeah, it is about the transportation schedule, you know, and whenever you whenever you take one school and put it to an earlier time, you have to balance another school and put it to a later time. So you're disrupting two school communities when you do that. So it's not a simple matter of taking one and putting it to a to an earlier time and calling it done. It it actually requires moving two schools so that you have a balance. So that's the the main reason why we didn't make a a change there.
So would that be something that you would consider doing later as we progress and look at the other mechanisms of how we'll be putting the schools together for the upcoming following years to come?
Yeah, yes, but because I do think that we have a really good opportunity in the future with proximity being implemented and also getting a little bit more innovative in terms of how we transport using arterial routing and those type of things that we can start to provide a little bit more flexibility to schools in terms of these start times. So we're not just into them like like ironclad like we are now. This student assignment system with choice where they're going, you know, 14 or 17 different schools really creates some challenges for transportation. As we move away from that, it will open up some opportunities.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Jordan. Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, my my comment on this is moving, we will continue to move toward our proximity plan during this next year. I'm hoping that we will have the opportunity to get back to where we really should be with academics and our children's academic success driving transportation and not the other way around. And I'm hoping that academic services as we go through this next year and there's more planning, I've said this countless times, we need to look at, some other board members with this, we need to look at that high school start time because again, we have a lot of data that we've been using and the data very, very clearly shows that that very early start time is not in the interest of academic performance for our teenagers. And and so transportation should not drive academics. And and I hope that we can come up with solutions again, as we move closer and closer to the proximity plan that should really in part solve this problem.
And that and that will continue to be a consideration as the time. I mean, Dr. Savage has already looked at at the possibility of moving the high schools and middle schools to high schools to an earlier time and middle schools, excuse me, later time, yes, later time. And and starting at the same time as our middle schools and and really operating a two tiered system. And again, I think proximity may give us give us an opportunity to do that. But as 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 we learned with the seven period day discussion or seven period scheduled discussion, I think that's one of those, that's a large shift in in culture culture for Lee County. And so we will have to prepare everybody for that shift if that's the direction we we want to go in. But yes, you're correct as far relative to the research, absolutely.
Thank you very much, Dr. Atkins and Dr. Savage. And now Ms. Giovinelli.
Fisher, I just to clarify that that I wouldn't say that it's an accurate characterization that transportation is kind of what it's engineered on. I would say that to to kind of back to what Dr. Atkins said, it's really the choice environment where we're providing a significant variety of choices far above and beyond what most districts provide. And we provide transportation for that effect. Transportation is is absolutely not the driver of the decisions. It's just the it's it's a matter of the choice, I would say, and the status quo of the operation. From that standpoint, is what's driven the transportation piece. And I I just don't think it would be fair to say that transportation sets the agenda on that particular piece. So I just wanted to clarify that as well.
Thank you, Dr. Savage, for that clarification. Okay, Mrs. Giovinelli?
And I just wanted to add to that. I'd recently sent a a list of things and that was on, it was the bell times and and the high schools starting later with the information. I think we we really need, I've seen some data from California and so forth, but I think we need to see the data and what other districts are doing and and, you know, where that's where that trend is going. I think Dade County is on the fence still about changing that. So I I'm I'm real anxious to see, I think, more information on that and and try to include that into the schedule change that was almost implemented recently. So I I just wanted to just add to that a little bit more and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So what we can do moving forward, we have places where we want to keep the the board informed about the discussions relative to the schedules. So that can certainly be a part of those discussions.
Thank you very much. Okay, Ms. Vaughn?
All right, the next next item approval of the total project cost estimates for Cape Coral Elementary School HVAC and Fort Myers High School HVAC. This is, if we do not have funds for sales tax or have much less, shouldn't we be anticipating changing our priority list for maintenance? Not that all maintenance isn't important. So Dr. Savage, and I can tell you that I know at the capital committee meeting, there has been, I guess vigorous discussions is the best way to describe it. And so they have been working on, you know, restructuring their capital plan in anticipation of of lost revenue. Dr. Savage?
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. You know, I just want to say we certainly agree that any change in sales tax revenue will have an impact on our prioritization and selection of projects. Due to many years of having insufficient capital dollars to maintain a maintenance rotational schedule, we are significantly behind schedule in terms of major facility components exceeding their expected life. You know, this can result in significant repair expenses when the systems fail. This is especially the case in the two items that this question was tethered to HVAC systems. So while our priorities will change, the HVAC systems in particular are some of the most vital projects due to their significant impact with both operating a school as well as protection of the building assets. Having these projects selected, moving through all phases of the procurement process and scheduled is an essential way that we control costs and ensure that we are installing proactively instead of having to pay for, let's say, extensive emergency repairs. And then also follow that up with an expensive replacement after such critical systems have failed. So just an example, imagine the the system fails in a giant building, you now have to pay for emergency system AC system to be set up while you put a makeshift repair in place. And then, of course, scheduled potentially in a less advantageous financial position to get that those repairs, which may be quite expensive. So this is really a a proactive example of maintenance. But but to the larger question of just in general, yes, we are going to be looking at everything and really prioritizing in that regard. So I hope that answers a question. Feel free to let me know if that is not.
Thank you very much, Dr. Savage.
Okay, I believe the last item that I have is just to come back to the table motion from May 5. That Ms. Gittens had a request and an update on the meeting with parents about the proposal. And then there was never any intent to even consider it as evidence when the request was made. The last statement was when the parents see the dates and schedule, they'll be fine with it. We were told all of admin and teachers were behind the district plan when actually some were amenable to the option. Were admin and teachers told to have nothing to do with it? Do we have a contract and a price for Hertz Arena? And has it been paid? So I know Mr. Simmons has been in touch with the parent and is prepared to respond.
Good afternoon, everybody. Yes, I did. I emailed that parent back and I also contacted her by phone last week. I explained her biggest concern was that she felt like we could do ceremonies right now, either in the stadium or drive by to our groups in the auditorium. What I explained to her is that we had already begun planning the virtual option as well as the the traditional option in July. And then I also shared some the concerns that the high school principals had because of the inequalities in the size of our stadiums. Some of them are small, some of them are large. Also, being able to get staff to come back to run an event in the stadium as well as security concerns that you you all know that have been involved with high school seniors. We love them, but when you bring them back and put 500 of them on the field, you can't guarantee that there's going to be social distancing following of CDC guidelines. We love them, but they're they're going to hug and they're going to take selfies and that may not look good in the public if we if that happens, you know, if you see all the seniors all gathered up. So we were, that was a concern of the high school principals. And at that time, we had already begun the planning of the of the virtual in June and the traditional in July. I also compared what we are doing with what they're doing in Collier and Charlotte County. Both Charlotte and Collier County are doing a doing the virtual option as well for their high school students. They are planning on doing something in their facilities later in July. But they they've come out and said if they can't do something in July, then they will plan something else. And that's still what we are planning to do as well. We we've already met with Hertz, our graduation reps, and they have they have started down that process of planning that and we're well underway with the virtual to be able to do that. And at this time, you know, adding another graduation ceremony on top of the two that we're already doing seem seem like a lot and high school principals were, you know, understandably concerned about, you know, adding something else to the plate. I will tell you that, you know, today we've started passing out the yard signs. So kids should have them in their hands by the end of the week. And they'll be displaying throughout the district. So that's exciting and that's some good progress. But that's what I did. I did reiterate that parent that if we do get to July and and we don't have something comes up where we can't do the the traditional ceremonies, then we would absolutely be planning something else for our seniors. And that that's where we left it. And one of the questions was if we had a contract with Hertz. Yes, we have that and the amount is $27,740. And I think those are the questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Simmons. Hand up, Ms. Gittens?
Um, yes, thank you, Mr. Simmons, for that report. Several parents have asked about with the Hertz situation economically that they're going through right now, the possibility or what's happening with them because of solvency and, you know, business wise and all of that. Is there a plan B?
Yeah, what what will happen if we get to July, we're not able to do the Hertz, then we're absolutely going to plan something. And, you know, we would have to get the stakeholders involved on what that would be and what the CDC guidelines were at that point. But our plan has always been and always will continue to be to make sure that our seniors are recognized.
And have we already paid for Hertz?
No, ma'am, that check has not been done. And we've also worked with legal to put in wording. You know, things have changed with contracts now so that, you know, we're dealing with CDC and there is wording in there that has to do with how we would address payment if we get to that point and CDC guidelines do not allow it. So we made sure to put that in the contracts.
Thank you. And I I would only hope that if there are changes down the road that you would consider the parents that were involved with that motion to possibly have their input as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Atkins.
And that's all the questions that I have.
Okay, then we're we're running a little ahead of time and that's good. So at this point in time, we'll take about a five minute break and Mr. Eldon, can you get and Clara in on the meeting for the next the next piece, which is the RSM evaluation tool? And this is not the evaluation of RSM, but this is a review of the proposed tool that we will use to evaluate RSM when before the time comes on June 30. And Ms. McClung will be facilitating and thank you, Cindy. So we'll take a five minute and then move on to RSM. Thank you. So we'll take a five-minute and then move on to RSM. Thank you. With the presentation by Ms. McClung of the RSM Auditor Evaluation Tool. So at this time, I'll turn it over to you, Ms. McClung. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Good afternoon, board members and all of our assorted guests. Glad to be with you this afternoon. Going to start by sharing the screen and sharing the PowerPoint that'll just guide us a little as we go along and I'll go in and out with that. Are you seeing the PowerPoint at this time? Yes, okay, great. All right, so just beginning our workshop, I wanted to remind everyone of our meeting norms that we generally use in our workshops that will begin and end on time. We're actually beginning early, so that's a positive for us. Being actively engaged, be prepared, remain on topic, and treat all participants and ideas with respect. Now, agenda for this portion of the workshop, we'll start with our Board Auditor Evaluation Instrument. Once we've completed that, we'll move on to the Governance on Board Evaluation and then finally, we will have the liaison assignments for board members. Any questions about what we'll be doing this afternoon? Okay, thank you. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and share with you the, sorry, I've lost my screen. I'm sharing with you the Board Auditor Evaluation Instrument. Hopefully, you've had time to review that. So as soon as I can pull it up, I'm having trouble finding my sharing button here, I'm sorry. Whole screen has disappeared.
Cindy, you may have to stop sharing this current document, move to the other one.
Well, what's disappeared is my screen that's showing me all my options. I can see like four pictures.
If you roll over the video, do you see a stop share at the top?
No. No, I do not.
What's the, what's the name of the document? Maybe I can pull it up for you.
Uh, it's School Board Auditor Evaluation Instrument.
All right, let me look for it real quick.
Oh, here we come. It's just moved to a different screen. Okay, so I stopped sharing that document and this now I'll pull up the Auditor Evaluation. Okay, is that showing correctly now? Thank you. Okay, so board members, are there any questions or comments around the instrument? I followed the procedure that we had used with the Superintendent's Evaluation and also the Board Attorney's Evaluation, so the format is very similar to that. What I did was look at the Board Auditor Job Description and hopefully included all of those most important elements in this, this evaluation instrument. Again, I followed the format of the Superintendent's Evaluation and the Board Attorney Evaluation and those included the evaluation piece and then descriptors under each piece of the rubric. Questions or comments?
Now that I've gotten myself off, I can't seem to get back on the screen. Can you hear me, Ms. Fisher?
We can hear you.
Oh, okay. Um, I just, excuse me, I just wanted to make sure of the process with this and I, I thought I heard earlier that we're looking to use this document to evaluate RSM in June when their contract is up. And technically, by protocol, evaluating someone on an instrument that is not, that was not presented at the beginning of the contract time or beginning of the year, to me is a little bit difficult. It's kind of stepping outside. It's like, you know, do the job, but we haven't told you how we're going to grade you at the end. And so that's the concern I have. If, if indeed you're looking at using this in another month, our process and procedure for developing policies or documentation like this takes a while. I mean, it has to come before different meetings and then be approved and changed and all of that and discussed in workshop. So I'm just, if someone can clarify that for me?
Mrs. Fisher, my, my understanding was, was that this could be used as an evaluation tool with RSM, but the overall was to have something in place because at the time we began this, it wasn't, it hadn't been determined yet whether we would be able to have an, an individual or a group as the Board Auditor. So if you can explain or clarify that.
Yes, and, and that is, that's very accurate. So for all of these months, Vice Sirota has been negotiating with the Department of Education, with the General Counsel because there was not a clear interpretation of the statute whether or not we could continue to employ a firm for our auditor or if we needed to have an in-house individual. So that being said, I know that there have been conversations with Ms. Bruno, Ms., Mr. Williams, and I don't know then if Ms. Bruno, you could weigh in at all regarding those conversations, but this is coming before us today so that we can review it, ask questions, make comments, and it is not saying that this is the evaluation tool, but that it maybe could be. And, and were there any suggestions to editing it or altering it? So this is the time for those discussions. And I see that Ms. Vaughn has her hand up. Ms. Vaughn?
Uh, yes, I have a couple of questions about how we might judge, actually make an evaluation on a few of the indicators. For instance, 2.04 fosters positive and collaborative relationship with district staff. 3.06, I'm just pulling a couple at random. Let's see, and follows up, it says consistently works with appropriate staff. How, how exactly would we go about evaluating? Because I'm, I, I know when we were working out some things with policy, there were a couple of times went back and forth where staff was saying, well, we did this and it's done and I would talk to RSM, well, it's been in their hands and, and that's... How do we overcome that kind of thing? How do we evaluate what kind of relationship they have with, with staff?
Dr. Atkins, I don't know if you have someone that wants to comment on that, but I, you know, I believe that we get at least quarterly, not more frequently, updates from our finance department, our chief financial officer and her team. And I know that along with that, what's happening with the auditing on behalf of the board, there will have to be a collaboratory experience with that staff. So I don't know if there's someone else who wants to address that, but I might ask, I might ask Ms. Bruno if you're ready to comment.
Thank you, Chair Fisher. Can you hear me, everyone?
Ye- yes, and Ms. Morgan, I see your hand up, so you'll be next.
I think at the time that there was a discussion on how to evaluate our current auditor because we do have to, the board does have to make a decision as to the, how to proceed with the June 30th contract, what the board would like to do. At that time, there was still no clear indication as to whether or not the board can have one individual, if the statute required one individual to serve as the internal auditor or whether or not we could have a firm. So I believe that the process was to get the job description for an auditor and try to come up with some tool based on what has been done in the past to be able to present something to the board. Since that time, we have gotten information from Mr. Myers, who is the General Counsel of the Department of Education, who advised that there's been communication between Auditor General's Office and DOE and a decision is forthcoming that will reflect that indeed there can be a firm that is used for that position. And we're anticipating that the letter will come out hopefully this week, hopefully by this Wednesday. The, the General Counsel advised that because every district is different, every district has different needs, that's why a firm is a possibility to be used in this particular position. So when we're looking at the tool, now we can formally create the tool as to for a firm versus an individual or both so that we have something that is appropriate for both scenarios. I hope that explains a little bit.
Ms. Vaughn, is that satisfactory for the timing?
Um, it doesn't really, no, I understand that part, but I just don't, I don't understand how we as a board will have, will have the ability to make a judgment on how well staff and RSM work together, whether there's, you know, a collaborative... Okay, the two that I have said before, for instance, if, if something's not timely, for instance, which was 3.06, whose fault is it or who, you know, I hate to use the word fault, fault. The positive collaborative relationship between the auditors and, I'm going to assume it's all going to be positive, but, but I'm asking is how do we, how are we as a board able to judge and to really know, are they collaborating? I mean, that's, that's what I'm really asking.
Thank you, Mrs. Vaughn. Ms. Bruno?
Thank you, Madam Chair. With regard specifically to RSM, specifically to RSM, I believe that we need to look at the Statement of Work, the first one and the second one. With regards to the first statement of work, it does clearly state that the client desires us to perform any management functions, make, does not require us to make any management functions, management decisions, or otherwise perform in a capacity equivalent to that of an employee or an officer or a client. So with RSM, I think we need to look very carefully at the Statement of Work, specifically Statement of Work number two. And I think that addresses some of Ms. Vaughn's concerns about how do we look at RSM relating to staff and those types of questions because the Statement of Work kind of defines specifically what the relationship is between the district and RSM. There's only certain staff actually that can interface with RSM pursuant to the Statement of Work. I hope that answers and clarifies the question.
Thank you very much. Okay, Ms. Morgan?
First of all, I want to say thank you to Ms. McClung because I think she did a really good job trying to pull out from the job description what really is critical in terms of performance and relationship going forward. I would also agree that with some of the comments made earlier that it doesn't necessarily serve our relationship with RSM because as Attorney Dupree Bruno stated, the Statement of Work, it is just simply not comparable to this instrument. I think the instrument is terrific and I think it should guide how we go about hiring an internal auditor for the 2021 year. I think that it works both for an individual employee of ours or for a firm in terms of expectations. In terms of, you know, how do you document relationships or how do you know about relationships? Essentially, that the audit function is, is a collaborative function and we would know if we have set up timelines, which we did not with RSM, and we had RSM and staff reporting on recommendations, we would have a very good sense of, of what the nature of the relationship was. So I don't think that's really an issue in this document. I think it's a great beginning. I don't think we'll know how well it works. I don't think we'll know how well it works until we go through one cycle with a firm that has come in with this expectation. But I think it's, you know, I think we've learned a lot this year. And I think a lot of what we've learned is in this document. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Morgan. And I think that one of the reasons we have Mr. Blondell and his colleague on today is so that they can also, along with us, review this and make suggestions. Yes, Ms. Gittens, just give me a minute. Okay. And then, so they may be to be able to provide some insight also. At this time, Mrs. Gittens, your hand is up. Ms. Gittens, please unmute.
Okay, with documentation up there changes it. Okay, for one thing, and I agree with the board members that as far as evaluating RSM in this previous year, the SOW, the statement of work, is what we have. And since it was the first time, I think that it really should almost mirror in this evaluation. It needs to be linked unless we're saying that we don't, you know, want to follow some of the things that we have done. But I've heard other board members say before that we did not, they didn't provide, we didn't provide them with a timeline, when in fact, RSM has given us, along with the SOW, a continuous update in the form of a timeline, saying exactly this is happening, this is where this is. And I really think that's a very, very important tool to have. So maybe some way that could be in the evaluation process as a tool. And when we have a question about something, we just go back and look at that, and it's right there in black and white. So I would hope that we would include some type of a tool like that when we're talking to our, we're looking at June 30th and what we intend to do.
Yes, thank you very much. And in looking at the dashboard report, it also indicates the activities that RSM has with the board attorney, with the chief legal counsel and other staff. So I think it is a good reference for that. And at this point, I see Ms. Patrica. Thank you.
Thank you. I agree with Ms. Morgan. Ms. McClung, when I initially reviewed the instrument, I was really impressed with how thorough it was and how closely tied it was to the job description. So thank you for that. You did the work for us. I remember doing the attorney evaluation instrument, the superintendent evaluation instrument. That was much more labor intensive on our part. So thank you for that. I agree with Ms. Gittens that it is unfair to evaluate RSM's work up to this point based on an evaluation instrument that they were not privy to at the beginning. However, I do think this instrument can be used as a framework for our discussion in June to determine how we want to move forward. So I think it's very valuable. And it will also, I think, as Ms. Dupree Bruno mentioned, help us determine our statement of work as we go forward with whatever it is we decide in June. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patrica. Board members, any other comments? Thank you. Ms. McClung, I'll turn it back over to you.
All right, thank you. So my understanding is that at this time, you have no changes to this particular document. However, you are looking at possibly using the statement of work as the evaluation tool when you consider what RSM, when you consider an evaluation of RSM's work over the past year. Is that correct? And I see Ms. Gittens has her hand raised.
Yes, Ms. Gittens?
I just wanted to say, RSM, are they on the meeting? Can we hear from them at this point?
They are.
Mr. Blondell?
I don't know if y'all can hear me. This is Jennifer Martha.
Hi, Jennifer.
Hi, how are you?
Fine.
I've been, we've, I'm here with Clara Ewing, and Matthew's also on. We've enjoyed just listening to you all have the conversation. And we agree, we think it's a great tool to foster the communication that y'all need to have. And I forget who mentioned it, but I think one of the biggest challenges of starting an internal audit function is really understanding what the goal is for internal audit. It's actually kind of a complex, you know, function, and what is it supposed to do, and hitting the ground running. And you guys are in your infancy, and you've completed the risk assessment, moved forward. We've had great conversations with you all and with the superintendent and his team. So I think it's a great starting place. And I'm delighted that you all have enjoyed the weekly updates from a communication standpoint. That's very important to us to communicate. But I think it's a great starting point.
Thank you very much for that. Any other comments? Ms. Jordan? Ms. Jordan?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. I'm sorry, did you just say that we get weekly updates?
I'm sorry, bi-weekly.
Because I recall getting weekly updates.
Yeah, I think every other.
Bi-weekly. My apologies.
Thank you. And actually, we just started receiving those when Fisher asked that we started getting some information from you all, correct?
I believe it was January when those started?
Yes. Yes, thank you. They've been coming right along, yes. Thank you. Ms. McClung?
Okay. And from that, we'll move into the next section of our meeting, which is the governance team evaluation. And as I hope was clarified at the beginning of the one o'clock meeting, the evaluations of the board members' self-evaluation and the superintendent's evaluation done by the board members was posted as backup material for this overall evaluation of the governance team. And Mrs. Cook is going to guide you through that evaluation of the strengths and weaknesses and opportunities, the strengths and opportunities as part of that overall SWOT analysis. You know, we do strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. So we're going to just concentrate on the strengths and opportunities today of the governance team as a whole. And since Mrs. Cook is available to guide that, I will have the PowerPoint that you saw that has strengths and opportunities. I will actually be typing into that as you are speaking. And during times, I may ask for a pause for, to show that to you to make sure that I'm properly reflecting the comments that you've made in terms of those strengths and opportunities. So with that, I will turn it over to Carol Cook.
Important that I turn off the microphone. Okay, good, thank you. I appreciate that. What I have planned at this point is to give each one of you an opportunity to share what your thoughts are. As I was going over the backup material, there were some people that were quite in-depth with their responses and others that had no response at all, no comments, just the numbers. So if it is okay with everyone, because our photos jump around a lot, what I would like to do is take each section and start with the strengths and go alphabetically and ask you to give me one strength. And we will keep going until we're done. If we have 27 strengths, we'll keep going. If we have five strengths, then we'll stop at that. So if you no longer have a strength, you just say pass. And when we get there, then we'll kind of review everything at the end. So we'll start with, is that okay with everyone? Okay. And I'm not seeing anybody raise their hand yelling no, so we're going to go through. And I'm going to call on you alphabetically, just so that I can remember who I called on last and move forward. So we'll start with the contextual area, and we're going to look at strengths. So Ms. Fisher, can you, in 50 words or less?
In 50 words or less?
25 if possible.
Let me see, I'll just get down.
What do you see as a strength in that area of the entire governance team?
Well, I think that we have an amazing potential in our governance team. We have individual board members who work very hard for continuous improvement.
Okay, so you have board members that work very hard in order to continue to improve. All righty. Ms. Jen? Giovinelli? Giovinelli? Do you have a strength?
Yeah, diversity. I think we're very diverse, and I think we need to embrace it more. But yeah, we're very diverse.
Okay. Ms. Gittens?
Okay, I'm sorry, I have been muted. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, and which, I'm trying to catch up with you with the forum. Where are we?
In the contextual area, the first dimension, strengths. Is there a strength that this governance team has in that area?
I'm trying to pull up mine to see how I'd said it. So can you skip me and come right back to me, please?
All righty. Ms. Jordan? Can you hear me, Jennifer?
Okay. I'm sorry, I'm trying to get on that as well. So I apologize that I didn't have it up and I wasn't ready. I think that our strength is the fact that we are, one, we're all women. Two, we are, as Melissa said, diverse. So we all have our own personal strengths that we bring in to play that, you know, collates with everybody else. So I just think that our own personal strengths that we bring in.
Okay, so each board member brings their strengths to the board. All right. All righty, Ms. Morgan? You're muted.
If we're talking about contextual, I think the strength that we have as a board is the strategic plan. It was begun in, I'm going to say, four years ago. The development began with community members, representatives from all levels, and employment in the district. And it has been refined continuously as we learn, as there is new research, as we learn more about how our district is functioning. And I think those conversations about our work in the context of the strategic plan and our success is what makes, is what makes us successful, if we're successful at all.
Okay, very good. Ms. Patrica?
Yeah, I think contextually, when we look at finances and setting priorities with regard to our CIP, we had a workshop with staff where they had us identify as a board what our priorities are, what our values are when it comes to prioritizing capital projects. And I think that that is definitely a strength. Because there's, it's required now that our values be included in any capital project that's going to move forward. Those are my comments. Thank you.
All righty. Ms. Vaughn?
We encourage students, administrators, teachers to come to our board meetings to make reports and often give feedback to what they have reported.
All righty, good, thank you. And Dr. Atkins?
I would say our, all board members are highly engaged.
Okay, very good. All right, we'll go back now to Ms. Fisher, and we'll just, like I said, keep going until you think we have covered all of the strengths. You're muted. You got it.
Okay, I think that the members of this board are avail themselves of continuing education by participating in in-service trainings at the local and state level.
Okay, very good. Ms. Giovinelli?
Um, okay, yeah, I also think this board, actually, Dr. Atkins took mine, the highly engaged, but are hard workers and I think everyone is here for the students. Sometimes we might lose sight of that, but I think we're all here for the students and making, you know, and things be better in the district. So aside from motivated, they're, they're, what's the word I want? Highly motivated and student-driven.
All righty, good, thank you. Ms. Gittens?
Yes, you didn't get back to me on the first.
I was going to say, we're going to give you two right now.
All right, thank you. On the first one, I agree with several of the board members, the strategic plan and the fact that we have the public to be able to speak, even in this digital time, to hear what the public has to say. And actually, I thank Ms. Bruno for bringing that up in our training last week, that allowing and not censoring the public, that we have to be very, very careful about doing that. The second one, research. We often at least attempt to share articles and different things that are out there. And yeah, I'll leave it at that.
Any other strengths? Ms. Jordan? Debbie, any other strengths?
Looks like she's frozen, yeah.
Yes, yeah. We'll see if we can come back to her. Ms. Morgan? Your microphone's on, off. There we go.
Oh, sorry, I thought I had turned it off. Pass.
Okay. Ms. Patrica?
We're still on contextual, right?
Correct.
Pass.
All righty. Ms. Vaughn? Your microphone?
Covered everything that I had. Thank you.
Okay, so you passed. Dr. Atkins?
Pass.
Okay. And Ms. Fisher?
Are we not on?
We're still on contextual. Strengths.
Oh, okay. Well, I think that we have potential to bring together the different paths and the diverse experiences to assist in providing a forum for implementing our strategic plan.
Okay. I'm going to go to Ms. Jordan because you were frozen before. Do you have something to add as a strength in the area of contextual? The first dimension. She still looks like she's frozen again. Okay, let's go to Melissa. Ms. Giovinelli?
I'm pass as well. Thank you.
Ms. Gittens?
So are we, we were starting out doing one by one. Are we looking at contextual as a whole at this point? Because that's where I'm confused.
Yes, what we're doing is, in the area of contextual, we're going all the way through for all of the strengths until none of you see any more strengths or have, they've all been said. And then we'll go into the opportunities, then we'll go to the second dimension.
But we're just going in general, not step by step, one, two, three, four, five?
The whole area. The whole area, yeah. So if you have, yeah.
On the policies piece, I think we... On the policies piece, I think we, um, uh, talk a lot about, and especially like through FSBA and, and our legislative piece, we do keep abreast of what policies and procedures. And we are, have brought it up before and we're working on making sure that we keep them updated. So it is something that's uppermost in our mind.
All right, good. And, um, Mr. Dupree Bruno, I saw your hand raised? That one?
Madam Chair, I just wanna make sure that all of the board members can hear and participate. I was concerned about, um, Ms. Jordan freezing up. I don't know if there's a way to make sure that she's able to participate, Madam Chair.
Yeah, she looks like she's okay, well, excuse me. Go ahead, Mary.
Yeah, yes, me unmute myself.
Okay. So Mr. Eldon, can you help us with that? Ms. Jo, Ms. Jordan, are you back on? You were frozen for a while.
No, I, I'm back on.
Okay.
Can you, yeah, I went, I went off the line somehow, and then I came back on as soon as Carol called my name. Yeah, I disappeared.
Oh, okay.
But I'm back.
So do you have anything to add as a strength in the first dimension?
I just think that, uh, we are, I believe that we're, we stay informed of the goings-on in our community and in the district.
All right, okay.
So knowledge.
Knowledge, alrighty.
Yes, ma'am.
So other board members have passed. Is there anyone now that has something to add that has not been mentioned as a strength in the, in the first dimension in contextual? As if so, just wave your hand. All right, then we will move to opportunities in that same area, and we'll do the same thing as we go through it. So, um, this time I'm gonna go backwards. I'm gonna start at the bottom and, and work up, um, alphabetically. So I'm gonna start with Dr. Atkins. Are there opportunities for improvement? In this area?
Yeah, probably everyone, uh, needs to do, uh, an equal share of preparation coming into meetings.
Okay. Ms. Vaughn?
Uh, I, I would say that, um, looking at one of the pieces here, um, a systematic plan for, for feedback. Um, I think we talked about last meeting, having, um, calendar. And I, I think that would be, um, something that would be a good opportunity.
Alrighty, good, thank you. Ms. Patrica?
I think we still struggle with, um, the difference between the superintendent's responsibilities and the board's responsibilities. And I do believe the, um, what and how discussion that we had last week will guide us. And, um, Attorney Dupree Bruno, a lot of this, I think, is gonna fall on your shoulders going forward as well. I say that with a half smile. Um, but I think that that's an area of opportunity, those are my comments, thank you.
Alrighty, Ms. Morgan?
Am, am I unmuted?
You're fine.
Okay, um, I would agree with Ms. Patrica's statement that, um, we struggle. There are two different views of our role as board members on the board. And we communicate from those points of view, and we evaluate what others say and do from those points of view. Uh, we need to find that place in between where we can do constructive work.
Okay. Ms. Jordan?
Okay, I believe that we need to make sure that we keep our lines of communications open, and that we really make sure that we are listening and hearing what each other are speaking about, and not to take things personal. We need to keep in mind what our charge is and move forward with it.
Ms. Gittens?
I believe, I'm trying to figure how to say this. Um, the board is divided, and it is fractured on its definition of what our role is and what our ability is to ask questions and to be involved. There is a chasm in that division. And partially because there are some board members that are privy to more information than others. And it creates a divide. So then the ones that are not aware of what's going on ask questions and are told, no, stay in your lane. Um, it's, you'll find that on my review, uh, self-evaluation, communication is the bottom-line key to everything that we, uh, sometimes do well, but most of the times need to improve on. And if communication is universal, um, it helps in this area. I, I believe we need to, um, and there's something I wanted to say about that, but I don't know if I wait until, are we going to do the same type of thing for the superintendent's evaluation?
We are doing, okay, we are doing this as a governance team only. Your evaluation, the superintendent, will be a discussion you have at a, at a later time. That's not part of the governance role.
Okay, well, basically, you know, when I talk about communication being an issue, it is a governance role, because if there are some people that...
Yeah, communication is part of the issue, you're absolutely right.
Yeah, it's, it's definitely an issue. And to me, the issue is when people are saying, okay, you can't ask this, or you can't ask that, and you're stepping over your boundaries. It's because of a lack of communication. And it's not always because someone is trying to be, uh, just, uh, difficult or trying to stir up things. And, uh, I, I have to say this, over the, since last weekend, I've gotten so many calls and texts from people saying, please don't, if you're gonna do the evaluation, please don't, uh, bring up to fire the superintendent. And I, I was floored, because my point is, that is the furthest thing from my mind at this point. But somewhere along the line, that communication was put out there. Not for me, but, uh, it's the same thing that happened last year when we got ready to do evaluations, and it was put out there, oh, don't fire the superintendent. We're not listening to each other, we are assuming, and this is a big, um, example of an assumption. And we have to learn to really listen.
Right, and I, and I'm, excuse me for interrupting, um, but at the same time, it may not be that somebody said, you're thinking about firing the superintendent. It may be your actions all year round that give people the, um, the thought that, oh, gosh, now that you're doing the evaluations, this might happen. So I, I don't know, and I'm not claiming anybody, but sometimes actions speak louder than words.
And I understand that, but in the past, there is concrete proof that board members did contact community and put it out there that that was an assumption as to what was gonna happen.
Okay.
So, I mean, you, you know, you, you want trust and collaboration, but you, like you say, all during the year, things prove the opposite, so.
Exactly.
We're just supposed to do.
Yeah, and, and right now, you don't have to defend your answers.
Okay, no.
Honestly, we, we may go back to that, and, and I get it. We're going to, um, we're gonna look at opportunities, and during the next steps, we may need some of this, um, this conversation. But we wanna make sure we get through all of them, um, you know, within the time limit that was, was given. Um, so, Ms. Giovinelli? Opportunities?
Okay, so the board struggles with personal agendas. And, um, I think that I, uh, I think that we could work on that and just look in, and look at the bigger picture. Um, I don't, I, I think that, uh, we need to listen to each other and what people are saying to them, and try to, uh, to help circumvent that by working together and listening and showing that we do care what each other said, each other is saying. Even if it seems to might, maybe appear to be at a personal agenda, uh, sometimes it's not. It's just when someone comes to them, they, um, are doing what they think is best. And I think that we need to, um, focus on, and owning, and owning our, be, owning the accountability. I'm good with that, uh, holding everyone accountable, including myself. So, but we, but if everybody's not gonna listen to each other, then it's not gonna matter. Uh, and that's what's happened in the past, is no one wants to listen. People, um, sometimes there's hard questions that have to be answered or asked, and you condemn the person that asked that. And, um, and then it becomes a personal vendetta. And instead of saying, hey, where, where are they coming from and why? Let's get to the root of that, really. Um, because it may be totally from not what they're thinking, or it, it, it's valid, probably. Someone told them something. So you, you just head it off instead of trying to, to, to shut them up, stifle them. That's what I feel is happening.
Okay, alrighty. Ms. Fisher, we're still in contextual for the first dimension, fifty words or less. And your microphone is muted.
Okay, so, um, I had written down in my comments that, um, you know, although board members work hard to support continuous improvement, they're on different paths, looking to achieve different goals. I think we have too many different agendas, and I know that's a little repetitive. And I, I'm hoping that we, um, we have an opportunity to work to identify a common agenda and common goals, which are mission, our vision, and our strategic plan, uh, items.
Alrighty, good, thank you. Dr. Atkins, we're back to you. Okay, um, Ms. Vaughn?
We can do a better job on, um, board member comments in, in terms of reporting to each other. Um, there's nothing wrong with saying where you went in the community and that sort of thing. But I think the emphasis on, um, going out into the community and/or, um, our roles as liaisons to the various committees, um, should really be the focus. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
That we do a better job reporting things to, to one another? The, because we are a very engaged board, and I think it's helpful to understand, help us understand other things in the community.
Okay, all right, Ms. Morgan?
You skipped me. I'm so sad, Carol.
Did I? Oh, all right. Ms. Patrica, and then, then we'll go to Kathleen.
Um, I think that a systematic plan for feedback on policies has not been engaged in since, uh, Attorney Martin left. And I know that that has been already communicated as a priority for Attorney Dupree Bruno. And I suspect, or I expect, that we, we will be headed into that soon. I think tomorrow is our first step with the education ethics policy. And also, we're fifty words or less, right?
We're trying. All right, Ms. Jordan, uh, Ms. Morgan?
Pass.
Pass, pass, okay, now Ms. Jordan.
Okay, the only thing I have to say is, we're divided because we continue to say that we're divided. We are not divided, we are one board, and we have to work on that.
Okay, Ms. Gittens?
I'm, I'm confused, where are we now?
Opportunities in dimension one. Do you have any other opportunities?
Okay, opportunities in dimension one is communication. And you can hear someone, you can listen, but not hear someone. And many times, people will, uh, visually seem like they are listening, but they are not hearing, because they already have the preconceived idea that this is not relevant, this is not whatever. And we have to communicate by not only listening, but hearing and not sifting it through.
Okay, and we have communication down already, and it's all of the things that go along with communication.
Listening and hearing.
Okay, so listening, alrighty, alrighty. Um, Ms. Giovinelli? Do you have anything else to add or a pass?
Well, real quick, I think that we, we, well, back to the communication.
Nope, we already have communication.
I know, but, but we don't have it, like, at our school level, like, we're not, the, the, um, you know, conveying and receiving. So I think, I don't, that, a piece of that, I think, how's that?
So it's not just communication, um, within the board and the governance team, it is with, throughout the district. Yeah, and that's a problem everywhere anybody goes, for sure. Okay, Ms. Fisher? Microphone.
It's now, um, two forty-one, and we started at two twelve. So I don't know if, you know, rather than to go through each and every piece of it, we could condense a little bit.
Well, I'm hoping that some of the things that you're mentioning in contextual will also, um, filter down into the other areas as well. So if they are there, you can just say communication, you don't have to give any other. If it is the, um, you know, trust, you know, if you, if you just say that, you can just start using one word if you need to. Um, but in order for us to be able to go through and come up with next steps and how you're going to move forward, we need to understand that you have a lot of strengths, as well as there are opportunities for improvement. So, um, hopefully, this first one will be the longest, and, and we'll move on to the next. Are there any, I'm just gonna ask everybody, raise your hand. Are there any more opportunities in dimension one that people need to, to bring forward?
Is the word, is the word trust on your list?
Not yet, that was something I said, not y'all.
Well, I'm saying it now.
All right. To develop trust is one of the opportunities. Anything else?
Equity.
Equity in the contextual area.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, anything else? All right, we will now go to educational.
Ms. Cook?
Yes?
Ms. Giovinelli had her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Your micro, there you go.
I think it's, okay, yes, it's on, uh, uh, acceptance. I think we don't accept each other, um, and I, that goes with what somebody said about equity. But I think acceptance, I think we have to, you know, accept people for who they are and, and, um, and respect that.
Right, okay, all right. Anything else? Yes, Ms. McCleod?
I'm mute, please.
Now you are.
Yes, I'm unmuted.
Yeah.
I just wanted to be sure I really was. Uh, I would like to share this, uh, um, screen real quickly and make sure that people understand the types of notes I'm taking, and hopefully, as we, we won't need to share everyone, but, um, go ahead and share it real quick. You can see I've tried to, um, word the strengths pretty much the way they were spoken.
We're not seeing it on the screen.
You're not seeing it? Okay, you see it now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so with the opportunities, um, generally when we talk about opportunities, it's in, what do we need to do to improve? So I've tried to put, um, something that shows what that improvement would be, whether it's that we, um, keep the lines of communication open, rather than just writing communication so that we understand what it is about the communication. Um, build trust among each other so that we, so you can see the types of notes. Um, you'll take just a quick look and make sure that that's acceptable to everyone.
Okay, is everybody alright with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Then I will stop sharing, and...
Melissa? You have your hand raised?
Yeah, can we add mutual respect with that? Mutual respect, awesome, for opportunities? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, let's go on to educational. And I think now is where you'll start seeing that some of the things that you mentioned in the first area actually flow over into the other. For example, when you're talking about participating in in-service, that was one of the things that was already mentioned as a strength. Examining rules, that was also mentioned. So, you may find that some of those things fall over. And if, with your permission, when we start looking at our next steps, if we can move them into the proper categories, it will still be discussed, it will still be added, but it may end up in different categories, we'll be able to capture them all. Okay? So, now we're in the second dimension, educational. And we're going to start with strengths. And again, I'm going to give the superintendent a chance to start with a strength, rather than an opportunity. So, Dr. Atkins, do you want to add to the strengths of the governance team when it comes to the educational area, or the dimension?
Just on students, without one exception, is been my belief.
Alrighty, Ms. Vaughn?
Okay, we have the opportunity in workshops to have our questions answered for the action meeting agenda consent items. I'm good to say that's a strength, but can I do, I can do two at once. There is a weakness as part of that, because often, things change. We sometimes will have an agenda printed, and the background material, the backup material, isn't posted until a couple days before the action meeting. So, it's, does that make sense? It's a strength, because we have that opportunity. However, there is an opportunity there to make sure that the backup material is posted in a timely manner, because that's not true for every item all the time.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is a process is a good process, but the opportunity for improvement is to make sure that process is followed as closely as possible. Okay? Because sometimes there are things that come up at the last minute.
From the point of view of both the board, that we ask our questions in a timely manner, but also from the point of view of staff, that sometimes the backup material is not posted a week in advance when we first leave those agendas. So...
Alright, good. Ms. Patrica?
Pass.
Strengths?
Pass.
Alrighty, Ms. Morgan?
Most of us attend FSBA and do make efforts to learn about our role and responsibilities as board members.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Jordan? Where'd she go? There you are.
Strengths are that we receive the, well, now daily updates, so it keeps us all informed. I think we're well informed.
Alrighty, Ms. Gittens? Strength in the second dimension, education.
Okay, I think the agenda review process is very helpful in making sure that we are educated and have an opportunity to ask questions and know what's going on.
Ms. Cook, please unmute. Alright, thank you. Ms. Jevanelli?
Actually, biweekly meetings with the superintendent has been, honestly, because it's offset from the actually weekly meeting, I think it's perfect than having it weekly. I think the biweekly meetings have been very helpful in getting the communication. So, I think that's great. Thank you.
Okay, good. That's a strength then. Okay, Ms. Fisher?
So, I'm going to move my comment from the first one down to education, where that the board does take the opportunity to attend trainings, state and locally.
Okay, very good. And we'll go back down to Dr. Atkins. Do you have anything to add that has not already been said? Whether it's, at this point, whether it's in the conceptual area, or whether it's in the educational area, if it's already been said, well, we have captured it. So, you have any strength?
Yeah, from the educational perspective, I think the experience of board members' relative education has been helpful.
Okay, good. Ms. Vaughn? Pass. I'm getting ready to live. Ms. Patrica? Okay, pass. Ms. Morgan?
Pass.
Pass. Alrighty, Ms. Gittens? Ms. Gittens, do you have a, did I hit? No, I didn't. Do you have a strength in the area that, in the dimension of educational?
I think you asked me the strength in that, and I mentioned that the, so are you asking me something else now?
No, are there any additional that have not already been mentioned that you want to mention? And if they've been mentioned, just pass.
As far as strengths?
Yes.
No.
Okay. Ms. Jevanelli?
Yes. Okay, so, in addition to my, the biweekly meetings, I also feel that the superintendent is trying harder to address our concerns that we've had in the past regarding communication. I do see that he has put forth a lot more effort. So, for me, that's been most beneficial this past year. So, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, good. So, the strength is that this is moving forward and working better, okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Fisher? Anything else?
Pass.
Okay. Alright, wave your hand if you have something you want to add to the strengths in this dimension. Alright, now we'll go to areas of opportunity, and we'll start with Ms. Fisher?
Areas of opportunity in this dimension? In the educational dimension. I think board members need to examine their own understanding of responsibilities.
Okay.
Visually.
Alrighty. Ms. Jevanelli? Opportunities. You don't have to have any, but if you do, we just...
Well, I was still thinking about that, but keeping the line of communication open and consistent, I think we all need to do that. So, we're not quite consistent. We need to be more consistent.
Okay, alrighty. Ms. Gittens? Opportunities.
Okay, I'm coming. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I have to say, communication again. I am concerned with the amount of times, and it continues to get more and more, that we are told that we will be discussing things in one-on-one, as opposed to things being discussed as a whole. Very, very often, we're told, well, this will be discussed in your one-on-ones. And honestly, I am disappointed, and I've brought this up before, that the one-on-ones have become basically just informational with the superintendent and staff. And I have expressed to him, and did quite some time ago, say that I would like to have a true one-on-one, but it was never addressed. So, I think the requests and things of all board members need to be, you know, answered and looked at and responded to in a respectful amount of time. I don't think we should be doing so much one-on-one, because that creates the, you know, we're here...
The slide you were talking about earlier. Yeah. Okay. Ms. Jordan? Opportunities. Are there any that have not been spoken already?
Well, I do believe that, you know, once we are prepared, we need to be prepared for the agenda with the background materials that we receive. So, that way, we're not re-asking questions that we already have information about.
Okay, alrighty.
Being prepared.
Alrighty. Ms. Morgan?
I think we need to be more reflective about our work, and look for opportunities to improve our work as we go, as opposed to doing this on an annual basis.
Okay. Ms. Patrica?
Ms. Jordan stole mine. I would just add, the weekly board updates that we get via email, and as she mentioned earlier, that we get every day now. Frequently, questions are asked at public meetings that have already been answered in those weekly or daily updates.
Alrighty. Ms. Vaughn? Any opportunities?
Okay, and I'm not sure, Cindy, you got my double answer?
I think she did.
Okay.
You have another one?
Not right now.
Okay. Is there anyone who has another thing to be brought up in the area of opportunities in this particular dimension? Mary, am I seeing your hand? Mary?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So, I would request that when questions are asked of the superintendent in the one-on-ones, that the responding information be shared with the entire board, so that there is no feeling that one person has more information than another.
Alrighty, alrighty. Melissa? Or Ms. Jevanelli?
Jevanelli, yeah. Transparent, we need to be transparent, and realize that sometimes the redundant questions may not be for the person asking, it's for the community that's watching. So, we're forgetting who we're here to serve. And it's the stakeholders. And so I think that we're, sometimes we're forgetting why we're here to begin with. And you mentioned reflective, and I agree completely, but why are we here to begin with? It's so...
Okay, and I'd like to have captured on there the purpose of your board meetings, so that we can discuss that. Okay? And Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, I actually did have one other. One of the indicators here is that once a decision has been made, the board works together to see that it's accepted and carried out. And I would say on both sides of the divide, there's been a problem with this. That sometimes, some board members are not accepting of decisions that are paid by the majority, and then try to bring it back.
Okay. Alright, so once a decision is made, it's the decision of the board, and you need to work on that.
And we move forward as a united front, whether the majority side or the minority side.
Okay. Anything else in that dimension? Dr. Atkins?
I just felt I needed to respond to a couple comments, just because, just so the board members understand the process. You are, can have additional time with your one-on-one meetings, you know, upon request, and then also available by phone anytime. And a number of board members have taken advantage of that. In fact, Ms. Gittens does have a follow-up meeting later this week for that very reason. So, that's always been available, but I just want to continue to emphasize that. The second thing is, is that we are really working hard to try to make sure that any information that is, does come up in a one-on-one, that that information be shared with all board members, so they're all aware of it. So, I do believe, if you look back at the agendas over this past year, they're consistent in terms of what's being talked about at each one of those meetings. So, we make sure that we talk about the same things. And I think for the most part, they are. Now, there are sometimes an individual board member will bring up something, you know, and ask a question about an agenda that may be very, very specific to their situation, but that's become very rare at this point.
Alright, so a process has been put in place that has started, that may not have been there at the beginning. Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, I think when we went to this format, we made that, we communicated that at that time. And not everybody availed themselves to that. Most did, or chose not, you know, chose not to. But I want to, again, reemphasize that that has always been there, that, you know, because what we try to do is, we do seven board members on Monday now, which is, you know, that's seven people. So, we try to cover a lot of material over the course of a day. But if not everybody, everything's gotten to, then we do have the opportunity, if a board member needs, for additional time, whether it's a phone call, or another one-on-one meeting.
Okay, alright. Ms. Gittens?
Yes, and thank you for that, Superintendent. However, for the record, I want to say that when the 30-minute biweekly process began, at least I was not informed that this is the process. I was just told you have 30 minutes. And I did put in writing, I believe, like the end of January, that I would like to have additional time. And like I said before, I never, there was never a response from anyone to that request. So, I just want that on the record, that very often that happens, that there's, they just don't respond, and...
Okay. And we're looking, and we'll look at those areas of opportunity. How do we improve them? How do we continue them? You know, it may be just a little tweak. It may be that a process has to be designed, but that will be part of our next steps. Right now, we're trying to gather information, again, because some people wrote their comments, some did not. And how do we, as a governance, how do you, as a governance board, move forward and make some progress in that role? Okay? So, am I seeing any other areas of opportunity that need to be mentioned in the second dimension, the educational? Alright, I'm not seeing any more. So, we will now move to the third, which is interpersonal. And again, if it has already been said somewhere else, it does not need to be repeated. We will put them in the proper categories if needed. So, we will start with strengths, and we will start with Ms. Fisher.
So, I think that most board members are open and honest, and say what they're thinking.
Okay. Ms. Jevanelli? Melissa?
Can you come back to me?
Okay, alrighty. Maybe. Ms. Gittens?
Okay, can you hear me? Is my thing off? Okay. And we're on interpersonal or...
Interpersonal, yeah. Interpersonal, if there is strengths. Strengths?
I guess, no, nothing.
Okay, alrighty. Ms. Jordan?
Okay, I think that, well, I know I have, but I believe we all have, a discussion with our fellow members with common interests that we do share outside of the board, that makes us human. So, I think that we all look at that, there is something that we all can wrap our heads around, and we have common, something that's common in all of us.
Okay. Ms. Morgan?
One of the things I enjoy most about being a board member is having discussions with Dr. Atkins, because despite what some people may think, we don't always agree. And for me, me... Um, and for me, meetings with Dr. Atkins are opportunities for me to learn and grow. And, um, so I have to say that, um, yeah, I, the, the superintendent board member conference to me is really important.
So strength. Alrighty, very good. Ms. Patrica?
Um, my fellow board members keep stealing my items. Um, it is conferring with Dr. Atkins about differences of opinion as an individual. I, um, you know, I, I, I enjoy those conversations probably the most because I come at, sunshine keeps me from being able to have discussions with my fellow board members outside a, a meeting, but I can talk about anything with Dr. Atkins at any time. And so I frequently will get a perspective that I don't bring to the table in my own individual mind. So, um, conflict discussions are great.
Very good. Okay. Ms. Vaughn? Something you want to add in this area as a strength? It hasn't already been said. Pass. Okay. And Dr. Atkins?
Well, I, I know it's kind of been said, but I think, uh, you know, I, I would echo, um, the one-on-ones for me with every single board member. They have been, uh, positive, productive, enjoyable. Um, and so that's been a real strength. And, and, and it's been an opportunity where everybody's able to discuss, um, I think areas of agreement and disagreement. And, and everybody maintains, um, a, a high degree of professionalism.
Alrighty. Now, are there any, anybody who has not had an opportunity to share one of their thoughts on the strengths in the, in this area? Alright, areas of opportunity. Again, if it has been said in another dimension, you do not have to repeat it, but is there something that needs to be shared as an area of opportunity? And I'll quickly go through. Um, I'll start with Ms. Gittens.
Okay, am I-
Area of opportunity.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I can't, I can't find my voice button, but anyway, um, I'm still gonna say communication and mutual, mutual respect.
Okay, mutual respect and communication. This is Gina Belli. An area of opportunity that has not yet been stated?
Um, regarding the split board, it doesn't, because when a decision's made, we have, not always when it's been a split board has it been, um, the, you know, split decision but split board. It's not always that, but, um, the few times that it has been, it's, it really, um, the wedge, it, it, we can't move forward. It's very difficult. And, um, many members need to realize that once the decision's made, we do need to look forward. And we're, we struggle with that desperately.
Okay. Alright, um, and I am gonna come back to you, uh, Mary, so don't forget. Ms., Ms. Jordan? Any opportunities that have not yet already been mentioned in one of the domains?
I think there's a lot, but it's probably not for this conversation. But I can't think of like one or two words right now. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Morgan?
Uh, so I'm just gonna read the statement on the, um, rubric. Board members are able to be open and honest without fear of being ostracized.
Okay, that's an area that needs some work.
Yep.
Alright, Ms. Patrica?
Keeping confidential items confidential.
Okay.
Yep.
Ms. Vaughn? Area of opportunity?
Ms. Morgan just-
Just did it?
Yeah, she just said what mine was, was going to be.
Okay. Ms. Fisher?
So I think that we could use, um, a little refresher on conflict resolution.
Okay. And Dr. Atkins?
Uh, I use this, uh, personally, I think that, uh, so nobody takes as common as directed to them. So I know that as a member, I have been guilty of making assumptions about somebody's intention or motivation in their communication. So it's a caution to be careful about assuming one other person's intentions or, or motivations relative to their communication, if that makes sense.
Mm-hmm, it does. Good, thank you. Alright, is there any other area of opportunity on this, in this section that someone? Alright, Ms. Morgan?
Yes, um, annual priorities and goals are set, but we don't come back to them on a regular basis. We tend to be, um, we, we, we schedule meetings to talk about things we want to talk about, not necessarily talk about things that we need to talk about at the time that we need to talk about it. Um, and this goes back to the whole notion of the, the annual calendar, which we won, at one time had as a board that gave us the opportunity to touch base periodically with what our expectations were for, um, our own performance. Um, and, uh, that's it.
Okay. Alright, Ms. Gittens?
Strengths to number 10. Board handles conflict openly and constructively. Um, we really need to work on the fact that if someone disagrees, they are not trying to be disagreeable. It is a question that they have that may not be a question that you have. And to understand that it's not because they haven't done their homework or haven't read the, the manual or read the, uh, the questions, but that it is an honest thing that they would like to discuss. I remember when I first got on the board, I would talk about understanding how to agree to disagree. And if you could put that on, that would be one of the main things. No one is going to get their way all the time. Or shouldn't anyway, because we are a board of seven. And to understand, uh, it's like kids playing a game. You know, they're against each other in the game. The game's over. They're all sitting in the parking lot playing. But we as a board cannot let go. We carry on and there is the animosity because you didn't agree.
Okay. And that's, that is an area. Alright, anything else in this area? Okay, Melissa?
Um, number 12, actually. Um, there's been times when board members have, um, spoken, uh, about speakers and, um, our, you know, public comment and, and, and the board members have spoken negatively about them at, on, and their, and their comments and, and has had speeches regarding that. And I don't think that we're, we're not, uh, encouraging model respect, um, throughout. So I think that we're missing, um, opportunity to, um, listen and hear. So-
But you also said the word respect and that is one that we have not yet heard. We've heard, you know, communication, we've heard listening to each other and everything else. But, um, I think we'll add respect on to this one as well, if that's what I'm hearing correctly.
Yeah, mutual respect is-
Okay.
That goes through, that should flow throughout though.
Yeah, okay. Mary?
So I'm looking at number nine. Board provides bi- biographical information that helps members to get to know one another better. I would suggest it might be time for a virtual happy hour.
Okay. We'll add that on to the list. Okay, anything else in the interpersonal? Alright, Ms. McClung, you want to put that up and see if we've captured everything? Maybe? There we go. Okay, y'all can just look at that quickly and see if we've captured it all. So did we miss anything? Okay, I'm not hearing that we missed anything, so we'll move on to the next area.
Okay.
Um, this is analytical. And again, I want, I want to encourage us because we are running out of time. If it has been mentioned somewhere else, it does not need to be mentioned again. If it has not, let's add it to the list. Okay, so now we're in the fourth dimension with analytical. And I'm gonna start in the middle with Ms. Morgan.
Yes, I think we are good about cha- I think we are good about challenging, uh, the superintendent and staff when we don't understand things. Um, uh, he, uh, we, we ask him to explain his recommendations and, um, we engage in discussion with staff and the superintendent about those recommendations.
Okay, very good. Ms. Patrica?
Yes.
Alrighty, very good. Ms. Vaughn? Dancy? Your microphone?
I did that.
There you go. Strengthen this area.
Alright, I, no, I, I, I know, I just wasn't totally ready. Um, I, I think we've been, um, I, I think we have more. No, that's an opportunity. Pass.
Okay. Um, Dr. Atkins? Strengthen this area. Alrighty. Um, Ms. Fisher, strengthen this area?
Okay, um, let's see. Um, I, I think that when we do have an important issue, we are often able to brainstorm, um, good solutions.
Alright. And, Ms. Gina Belli? Strengthen this area, um, in the analytical area.
I'm gonna pass.
Alright. Ms. Gittens?
Okay, um, what I find interesting about this section i- is, is the topics are very much what we should be doing. And, uh, yeah, when you really stop and read them. So number three, for some reason jumps out at me. Board questions, administrative proposals, requiring the superintendent to defend or reconsider recommendations. I find that verbiage very interesting. And it is, very often we do, uh, come back and say, what about this? And then what's interesting to me is that this is saying in this part that that's okay, that we can do that. But in other sections of the evaluation, it's saying that we shouldn't. So, um, I put three as, yeah, that's a positive that we have the ability to ask questions.
Mm-hmm. And it's how you ask the questions, when you ask the questions and what questions that you're asking that all fall into that. So that's why sometimes you're gonna hear that it's a positive and sometimes it's, it's not. Um, and again, we can talk about that at a later point. Ms. Jordan? Strengths in this area of the analytical area?
I think that we, uh, as a board, um, as a district, we do seek outside assistance from consultants or other districts when we're considering work. I think we do a good job of that.
Alright. Alright. Now we've gone through everyone and for the sake of time, is there anyone that has something to add as a strength in this area that we have not yet mentioned? Alright, I see no hands, so now let's look for areas of opportunity in this, um, in the analytical, uh, dimension. And, uh, we'll start with Ms. Fisher. Is there an area of opportunity that has not been mentioned anywhere so far?
Hey, let me just take a quick look here. Sorry. Um, do you, um, sorry, I went into Melissa's stuff.
Do you want us to come back to you?
No, I, I have it right here and I will, um, analytical, okay. Um, I think that again, uh, despite the amazing potential we have, we really need to, uh, fix the disconnect in our focus on the vision, vision and mission.
Okay. Alright. Ms. Gina Belli? There you go. I was looking for your square here, your tile.
Um, well, I don't know, sometimes we don't, what we, hmm. Sometimes when we, um, have an issue, that is a downside issue, we don't always, um, convey it to the community so that they understand where we're coming from. So I, that's communication. So, um, I, I think it's important that we need to, how we, it's important how we're conveying things out to, back out to the stakeholders. Um, and, and especially for conclusions of things. Um, sometimes we miss opportunity for that. So it's, it's, it is communication though, so.
Okay, alrighty. Um, Ms. Gittens? Is there a, a opportunity in the analytical area that has not been mentioned somewhere?
Yes, number six. Um, when faced with an important issue, the board often brainstorms generating a list of creative approaches and solutions. Um, it is a negative for me because more often than not, um, there is already a foregone, gone conclusion as to where this should go and is going and will go. And I, I mean, I've been told that by, you know, administration, by staff, well, this is what's going to happen. And so the idea of brainstorming creative approaches means, uh, we have to listen. We have to look at all sides of the prism and not just one side and have a foregone conclusion.
Okay, so, um, you, the, the brainstorming doesn't happen often enough. And so you have to look at when is that appropriate and, and then be able to use that. Okay, Ms. Jordan? Area of opportunity, as they all been said?
Okay, um, no, I definitely agree with the brainstorming because I know when we work together and brainstorm, we are wonderful. We're just, we can accomplish anything. So I think we do need to do more of that. And the other was, um, and I think we have to be, really be mindful of how, how the, number five, how the decisions do, um, how the decisions on one issue influences and, and the impacts of the future decisions. So we really have to be mindful and pay attention and listen to what we're being, uh, informed on.
Okay. And Ms. Morgan? Areas of opportunity?
Yes, we need, uh, to be careful about bringing forward, um, things for consideration and decision simultaneously at a board meeting.
Okay. Ms. Patrica?
If still mine, I would add to that, that we, um, need to follow our protocols with regard to polls and explanations thereof in advance of meetings.
Okay. Ms. Vaughn?
Okay, so it looks like we've had it, which was part of what I was going to say. Um, brainstorming on both sides, which is interesting. Um, because I, I would put the brainstorming part on the opportunity. And I want to add to that, um, when we brainstorm, I don't think that we use our advisory committees to, um, our greatest advantage. So I think we need, we need to do a better job of, um, the topics that we, um, that we introduce, the topics that are introduced to our advisory committees and, um, consider our advisory committees as well as other people, for instance, teachers.
Okay, so utilize those-
Utilize-
Resources.
Out, outside resources besides, um, besides us.
Okay, alright. Any others? Oh, Dr. Atkins, I did not, um, call on you for areas of opportunity. call on you for areas of opportunity.
No, I'm good. Thanks.
Okay. Anybody else have anything that needs to be added that has not been said? Melissa?
A follow-through. We might brainstorm on something, and I have to agree with Ms. Jordan. We do brainstorm well, once we do, but we the ball gets dropped and we don't have any follow-through. We don't, the topics doesn't come back around for discussion to finalize or to have an outcome. You know, it becomes open-ended. So I feel like that we don't, we are not thorough in what we do.
Am I hearing that you
Things halfway.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Say that. No, go ahead. Say what you were gonna say.
Am I hearing that you're saying that you do the brainstorming, but then you never wrap it up as to, okay, we've done the brainstorming, now this is how we want to move forward? Is that what I'm hearing?
Right. Yeah, we seem to be disconnected at that point because we all have our own perceived ideas and they're all different. So we don't communicate that well to each other as well. We might all talk about it, but then sometimes the outcome is different than what we thought or expected. And a perfect example, we just had something, the task force. We all talked about it, and I think now it's starting to evolve and it wasn't quite what we all thought. And so, you know, am I crazy? But can I get some input from other board members and see if they're, if I'm saying what I want to say? I mean, say it clearly?
You're crazy. Okay, I think we're hearing it. Anybody who doesn't quite get what she's saying? Okay, I think they're understanding it, it looks like. All right, Ms. Gittens? One more opportunity?
It's not that I don't get it, and I'm concerned to say that I really do understand. But anyway. No, that is a very good example. That what was brought before us was the idea of a task force for reopening schools. And the proposal was given to us that we would all have an opportunity to like as an advisory board type thing to provide at least one person from our district. And then we'd have a liaison from the board and a student liaison as well. And the next thing we knew, before it came back to us, we were told, well, the superintendent already has it, so all we need is the liaison and a student. Though the liaison was chosen by the board, the student was chosen by the chair. So what we were presented was totally different when it came back. And I don't understand where things change and we're not involved, and that's what creates that fiction because obviously some people know about the change and others don't. But then we're given the change and you ask a question, and well, that's already done. So why are you bringing up stuff that's already done? So, yeah.
Okay. Is there any other area of opportunity that has not been mentioned? All right. Now, I'm gonna ask a question of all of you and Ms. Fisher specifically. We still have two areas, and we have already gone over the hour. Is this something you want to very quickly go through? Or is it something that you, as a group, want to do with Ms. McClung to finalize this at a later time before we start looking at next steps and your next onsite?
Well, I think that we are running a little ahead of time. And it's okay with everybody. Maybe we can go through the last two quickly and then move on. If you're okay with that.
Is there anybody who is not okay with that? Because we have spent more than an hour on this particular subject. Okay, I'm not seeing anybody opposing it, so we're gonna move forward very, very quickly. And we'll move into the political dimension. Dimension five, political. What are your, see, your timer's off. Strengths? And at this point, rather than going through and going through and going through, if you have a strength that you want to share, raise your hand. Something that has not already been mentioned. We'll call on you as I see you. If I miss you because the squares and tiles change, I will get back to you. We'll start with, we'll start with Ms. Fisher, then Ms. Gittens.
Okay, so this board is incredible at connecting with the community. They are out there and connecting with other governmental agencies and the parents and students in the community, so I think that's a strength.
Okay. Ms. Gittens?
Mine would have to do with number four and five, that we do have our advisory boards and our committees and opportunities for them to report out at the meetings, and that's an ongoing thing that is a strength.
Okay. Any other strengths in that area? Going once, going twice? How about opportunities? Okay, Ms. Patrica?
I think that we have difficulty withstanding the pressure of special interest groups. Rather than relying on data, we frequently give undue weight to anecdotal feedback.
And so that's a problem with every board at times. Ms. Gittens?
Okay. Number seven jumps out at me. If the board thinks a group of constituents is likely to disagree, then they do not take that into consideration. We have gotten into a rut in the board and the district that once people are labeled to be dissenters and disgruntled and all of that, then they are treated accordingly. And actually, you know, we're a public entity, and if people want to send an email or a question every week, they have the right to do so legally. And so we should not, I guess, ostracize them or label them or talk about them in any way other than, you know, why they're coming. And I also think it's a problem because it could just so happen that one of the board members sees things the way one of the individuals sees it. And when you come to the board with it, and I speak for myself, I can agree with some things that I've heard, but I sit there and think, oh, if I say this, they're gonna think I'm in with that dissenting group. And that is not the case. There are various thoughts of mine, and sometimes mine will click with this group, and sometimes it'll click with another group. And we should not be labeled. That is very defamatory and labeling board members and community members because of what they think or feel is really a detriment to what I hear the board always saying, where we want to look a certain way with the community, like we're getting along and all of that. But that is very, very, very divisive.
Okay, so I'm actually hearing both sides of that issue as an area of improvement. Sometimes special interest groups are getting too much authority or a small group of people come to a board meeting and decisions are being influenced. And I'm also hearing that when people come, you're not always listening to those small groups or individuals that may be coming. So there are areas of opportunity just overarching as to what do you do with the public input? How do you treat it? And what's the appropriate way of dealing with that, is what I'm hearing. Ms. Gittens?
And can I just say, yes, that is true. And I think we need to look at all people that contact us in any way as constituents. And it kind of goes back to one of the other ones, though, that understanding how to agree to disagree is real simple.
Right. Okay, anything else in the political realm? Melissa or Ms. Giavanelle? Sorry, I keep calling you by your first name.
You can do that. Actually, it's just back to the mutual respect. I think that everyone has a voice and they should be heard. They shouldn't be considered special interest groups. Because I think, I can almost say, almost everyone on board has probably a special interest group. Some actually attend their meetings. So I think we have to be very careful of what we are, you know, ideological is ideas of that. I think that we're treading on a thin line and we need to respect everyone. That's back to the mutual respect.
Well, a special interest group, sometimes that word is used inappropriately because it's misunderstood a lot. But a special interest group can be a group of people that are coming and talking to you about your high school start times. A special interest group can come and be a different group of people that are coming and talking to you about you know, boards, books that are going to be, the curriculum that's going to be adopted. So there are a lot of different things, but how do you respond to that? Is the area that I'm hearing that you might need to work on. Any other areas? Mary?
So just my final one is, you know, we are a public school system and the public owns our business. And so we do have to be respectful. And I think that when I look at number one, the board shows an awareness of the impact its decisions will have on the community. I think that's something we can work on a little bit.
Okay. Gwen? Or Ms. Gittens?
All right, that's okay. Gwen is fine. And I do have to say this, since we're under political. I have been accused from the board and then publicly of being political about statements and comments that I make. And I just want to say, I said in the very beginning, I'm not running for office for four years. So my comments and statements are not political. And in that vein, I have said it publicly, and I will say it once again. I feel that it's a conflict of interest to endorse, to be sitting on the board and endorse another candidate. That's my own opinion because I feel in November, one of those candidates that's running is going to be sitting next to me because I'm here for another two and a half years. So I don't want to start out with someone sitting there saying, you know, you talked against me during the campaign, because it's not about politics. I have not and I will not endorse per se any candidates because I feel it's a conflict.
Yeah, and that's a personal decision, but it is something we need to take into consideration. Any other opportunities in political? Debbie?
I just want to make sure that what we're speaking about is regarding everybody. What our opportunities are for the whole entire board. Which we're discussing right now, correct?
Yes, yes. Okay. Anything else in this area? Melissa?
Our legislatures. Actually, I think that we need to make sure that we're not publicly ostracizing them by making statements that you know, that would be negative towards them. Because we do need to have an open line of communication with them and opportunity. And I feel sometimes our board in the past has not thought about the things, the repercussions of what our actions. And so I think that it's very important to make sure that we have a good, open, working relationship with our legislatures. And nobody's talked about that. And that's back with the communication. You know, we do have Carol Green, our lobbyist, and actually that's been a real asset to this board. But we really need to make sure that our intent is to work together with Tallahassee, not against. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else that has not been mentioned as an opportunity in this area? All right, let's move to the last one, and it is the sixth dimension, which is strategic. What are the positives in this? Ms. Patrica?
One of the meetings I look forward to each year is actually the meeting where the superintendent and staff comes forward after the superintendent's evaluation to show us suggested changes in the strategic plan. Staff gets together, reflects on the prior year, looks at board's individual recommendations, and puts together a plan that they present to us. That's one of my favorite meetings each year.
Okay. Very good. Any other strengths in this area? Ms. Fisher?
So I look at number 10. The board is periodically advised of the availability of outside funds, such as state and federal grants, special programs, community resources. And I think that is a valuable tool for us, and our district does a good job with that.
Okay. All right. Ms. Gittens?
Positive. I this is a positive for the superintendent in the last year of really focusing on like the top five items, the top four items. And I see, and I've said this before, that the strategic plan is like our Bible. It's our guiding force, and everything filters down from that. And as long as we stay aligned to it, we stay out of trouble and we make things happen. So I appreciate that.
So are you saying that keeping your focus on the strategic plan is one of the strengths of this board, of this governing body, this leadership team? Superintendent or members combined?
And we, yes, we usually start out with that. It's a matter of, I agree with Ms. Morgan before when she was saying we need to do this maybe halfway through the year more often, just like we do with employees. Because sometimes, you know, we start to slide and to get back and to have that touch base to make sure the way we started is the way we're going to finish.
Okay. Any other strengths in the strategic area? Mary?
So this year, we each are assigned a portion of the strategic plan, and we work along with staff and community regarding that, and I think that is a strength.
Okay. Alrighty. Melissa?
Also, part of what we've been getting, schools are coming and updating us about the good things going on in their school, and I believe that's really a strong suit. And that's been added in the past year where the schools come and report, do reports to us. And because we don't always get to go to these schools, so the schools come to us. And a few of them have brought students, and that's just been like pleasure. It's just really great to see that. So it, and it allows also for the stakeholders to see that as well. And I think that's really key and important to, you know, the communication coming to and from. You know what I mean?
So You're able to see the alignment with, by doing that as well?
Yes, thank you. I think that's been a great asset and tool.
Very good. Any other strengths in this area? Debbie?
Yes, I also believe, and I know it's not on here, but the community forums, how we're going out there in the community and trying to share with them and getting feedback from the different areas of Lee County, I think that has definitely been good. Just need more participation, but it's good. It's a good start.
Any other strengths in this area? All right, how about areas of opportunity? Ms. Gittens?
Do you want to let Ms. Vaughn go first?
All right, Ms. Vaughn?
It's, I had that, I rated it as a four, that we have the procedure in place for conducting superintendent evaluations. But the reason I'm bringing it up on this side of the chart is that I came prepared today to discuss. And we ought to spend a lot of time doing the evaluation. And I think it's really a very important piece for us to be able to discuss. I see this as an opportunity because there may be some things that I put as a weakness on this superintendent and that other people put as a strength. And unless we do something with that and have a discussion as a board, we're not going to progress. So unfortunately, put not So unfortunately, put not discussing as, as a, as a, as a group, the um, the evaluation, I'm putting it on the opportunity side now. I put it as, as a plus that we have that opportunity to do that.
Mm-hmm, okay.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, this meeting does not prevent you from having the meeting about the superintendent's evaluation. Um, it sounds like miscommunication as to what the purpose of this portion, the governance team evaluation, so.
But that, so that was a total miscommunication. And I can tell you that I spent time last week printing out things, highlighting things in pre, in preparation and on our backup documents. So we can put that back down as communication.
Exactly.
But um, a- anyway.
We'll put it on both, we'll put it on both sides. One, it's good to be able to do that and to have the opportunity to do it.
Yes.
Also um, it is something that maybe might be one of the next steps. But it's an opportunity that Gwen has been missed right now. But it's an opportunity for uh, improvement is to have that conversation.
In, in my mind, it should have been something on today's agenda because this is how it was advertised to the public. And if you recall, initially, I brought that up. I sent an email last night and brought it up with Ms. Fisher. And I don't know if I'm the only one that misunderstood it, but it was my understanding that this would be a significant portion. And I remember what um, Ms. Gittens said right at the beginning. And I agree wholeheartedly that in the past, we've looked at these two things separately. And um, I, I, for one, um, when I prepare and when something is advertised to me and to the public, I expect that to be covered. So maybe we can put that as, as well, that, that we do stay true to what we um, advertise as, as part of the agenda.
Okay. Now, there is a difference between a board evaluation, a superintendent evaluation, and a governance team evaluation. And again, it's communication and the communication needs to be improved. We've all said that. So yeah, we'll move forward with that because I'm hearing what you're saying, Betsy. I am.
You know what, then I'm totally in the dark on the difference. If this is a governed team because it was advertised as government, governance team self-evaluation. And this is only my second year to do this, but I guess I wasn't enlightened on what the difference was. And when I asked the question, it was, um, sorry, but it was really dismissed. Um, can you, Carol, shed some light on what the difference is? And, and why we had it, backup information, why we had evaluations of the superintendent under this when we don't even touch on it?
Okay. When you are talking about a board evaluation, that is talking about the seven of you. And you're evaluating how you work together and what you do and, you know, same kinds of things. When you're talking about a superintendent evaluation, obviously you're evaluating the superintendent and how he, in this case, how he is moving forward and um, and his role in managing the district. A governance team, which we've talked about with um, master board training, is the board and the superintendent that create that governance team. And this was designed to be, how is the, having the entire governance team, board members and superintendent, looking at how are you moving forward? Evaluating the job that you're doing as a team? And what are the areas and how can you move forward? Okay? It is not precluding the board from doing a board evaluation at a later time and discussing it. Nor is it saying that you can't discuss the superintendent's evaluation that you do on a regular basis every year. This is not saying because we're doing this, the other two have to go away. This is how are you as a team, board members and superintendent, going to work together to improve what's going on in the district? How do you become the most effective and efficient leadership group to move things forward? And what we're doing right now is gathering the information. The reason why you were given the information from board members is to be able to review it and to look at it. And you'll see that some board members gave comments, some did not. Um, the superintendent um, looked at it and he, you're got, you have his um, information or opinion as well to add to the discussion. And this is the first step of working with the governance team, gathering what are the strengths? Let's build on those. What are the areas of opportunity? We're not going to be able to fix them all. We're not going to be able to fix them all quickly. Co, uh, communication, yeah, we need to work on communication because that falls into so many areas as people have been talking. But what are the next steps? Where are we going forward and how are we going to help you? And that's.
I hear what you're saying, but how does this um, you know, in, in the realm of posting an agenda for the public and for those members of the public that uh, maybe are tuning in right now or, or will later, um, when can they expect? Are we having a um, just a workshop with closed session workshop like we have in, in the past? See, this.
Okay.
This is capital, capital C O M M, communication.
Okay, yeah. And we, we with master board and FSBA have not had any closed sessions. They have all been open to the public. Whether or not people have shown up, that is, um, that is their issue. Again, if you want to have conversation about the superintendent evaluation, you as a board and superintendent set that date and move forward with this.
We did.
But it wasn't.
I'm, I'm, I'm done with it, but, but I don't know that you know that this was, um, this was actually um, a bone of contention on, on this board because um, it was originally, um, originally the superintendent polled board members individually. And it came back to us that um, the board did not want to discuss this. Did not want to discuss the superintendent's evaluation as, as a group in the meeting. And then after some attorney weigh-in, um, came back and said, well, yes, we do. And it was my understanding, and maybe Ms. Bruno can um, talk to this a little bit. It was my understanding that this was going to be a part of this. Now, obviously, we're running really long, but um, we just, we were supposed to have this and I find it a problem.
Well, Mary has her hand raised, so she may have some clarification. So we'll do Mary and then, um, and then Gwen. Both of you have your hands raised.
And I think Ms. Giovinelli's hand has been up for a while.
Oh, okay, okay.
This is a point of clarification. It was my impression that we did today's governance team self-evaluation. And we had the material of the board self-evaluation and the superintendent's evaluation that we would be discussing all of it and to, to identify our strengths and opportunities and then to decide how we were going to move forward. So I just want to clarify that for my colleagues. That was my understanding.
Okay. And then Dr. Atkins?
Well, that was my understanding as well. Um, you know, my evaluation is a part of this. I came today uh, feeling that, that that was uh, what was going to be discussed, prepared to discuss it. And um, um, and frankly, I feel like we've been on this subject really beginning in March. And here we are uh, into May and we haven't talked about it yet, so.
So when you said prepared to talk about it, was that your evaluation or the, the governance team?
Yes, ma'am. But your, my evaluation along with the board's evaluation of itself. And then, and then you have the team together because you've got the, the board evaluation that they can talk about that. You have my evaluation and talk about that. And then how you move forward with that as a governance team. That, that was my understanding of today and I guess, you know, I misunderstood.
Yeah, it, with so many different um, interpretations, it does show the communication part. So Ms. Gittens and then um, Ms. Giannavento, Giovinelli.
Okay. Well, first off, in my mind, the way this happened, the superintendent's evaluation last year, the process was there. Um, he did his self-evaluation, we do ours, we come together. And in the bottom of that guideline, it says we discuss his contract policies, any process changes or whatever. And when his evaluation came out this year, we were told that it was not going to be done publicly. And I was the one that raised my hand and said, well, on the bottom of this form on our guidelines, it mentions policy, it mentions process, it mentions all of those things that we cannot do individually with the superintendent or anyone because that's sunshine law and that's Daisy Cheney. It's something we needed to bring out in public and talk about this whole process like we have in the past. And like I mentioned in the beginning, we had an hour or so for uh, to discuss his evaluation and, and decide where we go from there. You can go back and see the minutes in the video from last year. And we decided what guidelines we were putting forth for him for the next year. And then uh, so when it was finally put back after Ms. Bruno had said, yes, we need to do it, um, that was what we expected. And besides that, then it was put in the paper and the public saw. And the statement was, we're going to discuss the superintendent's evaluation. So I mean, that's what the public expected, that's what we expected. I don't know when and whom decided that we would take this turn to do a governance overview when that is not what we had decided upon. And again, like you said, it's the communication. Um, and as far as the, my negative in this sec, section as well, it's kind of a negative positive. Yes, we have the um, strategic plan piece where everyone, and we decided this as a board last year, everyone would have a piece of the strategic plan and report back. And it's kind of quasi happening, but in some instances, some board members are not having the same success in meeting with the teams as others. And I've talked with the superintendent about that and we are working on improving it. But I think we need to um, again, have that equity and have everyone have the opportunity to meet with their groups and on a regular basis and present back to the board what is going on.
Okay. Um, Melissa and then Dr. Atkins?
I guess, okay, so for me, I'm, I have to agree with him. I don't know when it was changed and who invited you. So. Carol, they're kind of like, I literally, I found out about it like yesterday, really. So uh, when I looked at the agenda, so, I mean, and it makes me wonder, you know, it, you know, were, were we circumvented with, with the polling because it was three against four. Four of them didn't want to even have this evaluation and, and everything. So, and for me now, if we're doing this governance thing here, what's the end game for us? What are we supposed to be doing? What are we going to be accomplishing? Because I think that's where, that's that follow-through that I'm talking about. That we need to make sure that what we're doing is not done in vain. We need to do something with it. And that is including our own self-evaluation, our superintendent's evaluation. We're all, we, we all matter and we all, and, and, and what we do matters. And so our working relationship does matter as much as some people may not think it does matter.
Okay. Let me, um, let me respond to that and then I'm going to have Mary respond. Where we go from here is what we're developing as your next master board onsite. And what are you going to be your action plans? What are we going to do with communication? We're going to talk about some of those things and move them forward. And um, and frankly, it'll be, you know, we've, we've worked and worked and worked. And this is going to be the culminating piece of it. Um, when we get together for your last onsite, whether it's done via Zoom or whether it's done in person, you know, time will tell. But this is, as I stated in the beginning, gathering information to come up with your next steps and to um, have some discussion and decisions as to where you go from here. Now, I'm taking the superintendent's piece out of that because that is not part of what we will be doing in the next four, for our time slot. That will be for you to set a time and decide if, when and how you're going to do your superintendent's evaluation. So this is not just an exercise in futility where everybody has a chance to just, you know, pat ourselves on the back for a moment and then gripe and complain for the rest. It's what are the opportunities for improvement? And the next step is how do we move forward and how do we improve? And having said that, I'm going to go to Mary because she had her hand raised for a long time.
Thank you, yes. So, so then just one more time. That was my understanding that we would do both and that that would all be part of the end game and, and allow us to prepare to do those um, contract and uh, next steps that Mrs. Gittens mentioned. That was truly my understanding for today. So I, I mean, I just want that to be clear. And I don't know if Ms. Bruno has any further comments regarding.
I'm going to have Ms. Way in. So all of that was supposed to happen in a, in the hour? Okay, all righty. Okay?
I would, Ms. Bruno. I would agree with the chair. When this issue came up and um, in reviewing some of the AG opinions, we made the determination that we did need to move forward with the superintendent's evaluation. It was set for today as well as the board's self-evaluation. So I think that I do agree with board members who have spoken. All of this was supposed to be done today with the discussion about the superintendent's evaluation, the discussion about the board and how we can move forward. So I do agree with the chair. That is what my understanding was as well.
All right. Then I apologize if I have um, taken you off on a course that you should not have been. I will assume the responsibility for that and I apologize. But um, the work that we did will not be in vain and it will not just um, you know, fine, you've all had a chance to talk and now we forget about it. There will be follow-through. Betsy, you had your hand raised?
Uh, thank you. I just wanted to say Dr. Atkins has had his hand raised.
Yeah.
Yeah, Dr. Atkins was before me. Yeah, and, and so was Mrs. Morgan and then Ms. Vaughn. Thank you.
Well, I, you may disagree with me, but as I see it, I mean, we just went through the board self-evalu, evaluation instrument, which was posted. Uh, why can't we go through the superintendent evaluation instrument as it's, as it's posted? Today?
Board members? And Ms., let, let me entertain Ms. Morgan and then we'll, we'll, we'll get a consensus. Ms. Morgan, thank you.
Yeah, so further to what Dr. Atkins was saying, I'd like to keep going. I don't want to break this up because I think we, we have a conversational thread that's going. And I'm afraid that we'll reinvent all of this stuff if we break and, and pick it up at a later date. But I also want to suggest that it's been two hours that we've been sitting here. And it'd be really nice, I'm sure, for some people if there was a break.
Thank, thank you for that, yes. We can do that. And then um, as soon as we hear from Ms. Giovinelli and Ms. Patrica, we will take a break. And then if everyone is in agreement, we'll proceed. Is there anyone who is not in agreement with that? Okay, so then that's what we'll do.
I have a caveat before I agree.
Yes, ma'am.
Can we impose upon Ms. Cook to um, remain as the facilitator?
Pardon me?
Can we impose upon Ms. Cook to remain as the facilitator for the remainder of the discussion?
Ms. Cook, that's a question?
For the superintendent's evaluation? Is that what you're saying? I'm willing to do that if you want.
Okay.
Give it to the board.
Thank you for that. And then I have Ms. Vaughn and Ms. Giovinelli. Ms. Vaughn?
I'm going to wait for any more comments.
Oh, okay, thank you.
I, I put my hand down, yeah.
Okay, okay, I'm so sorry. Okay, Ms. Bruno, then Ms. Giovinelli.
Madam Chair, I don't know if Ms. McClung is still available with us. I thought that she was supposed to be facilitating the evaluations and I thought she was prepared to do that, so I'm a little confused.
That, yeah, that was my understanding also, Ms. McClung?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
Were you prepared to facilitate our discussion of the superintendent's evaluation?
I can do whatever you'd like me to do.
Okay, Ms. Patrica? Or Ms. Cook, would you just stay with us then? Okay, okay, fine. Then Ms. Giovinelli, then Mrs. Gittens.
Okay, so no one answered my question regarding who invited Ms. Cook? How, how did that come about so quickly?
I explained that in my memo, in my previous memo, that we were negotiating, and I think I said it at the beginning in this meeting, we were negotiating to complete our master board. And since we had these, those two workshops Friday and today scheduled, and she offered to allow that to be count free of our master board training, and I, I had already explained that to the board, yes.
Yeah, I just somehow missed it. I didn't understa-, I, I just didn't understand. So I apologize, but I just didn't.
No, that's okay.
So, all right, thank you. How, wait, another thing is how long are we, how long are we going today? Because what, what's our time?
Okay, so it is now 4:07. We have, let's take a break for 10 minutes and then, Ms. Bruno, sorry, yes. Unmute, please. Ms. Bruno?
Five o'clock, Melissa.
Madam Chair, I don't know if we need to speak to Mr. Eldon about the continuation of the Zoom for time purposes.
And we can do that. I know he has built in some extra time so that it should not be an issue. But Mr. Eldon.
We'll be fine even if we go over the extra time.
Okay, all right, thank you. So then we're okay with that. We won't get kicked off the Zoom meeting. And then one more comment and then a break. Ms. Gittens? Okay, I cannot be the one that's keeping people from their breaks, so I will speak afterwards. Thank you very much, okay. It is 4:08, we'll be back here at 4:18, 4:20? Okay? Thank you.
Do you want to just go ahead? I mean, it's already. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome back. So we will go through the superintendent's evaluation. As you know, it has four general areas that have been evaluated. We'll start with area one, educational leadership, and we'll talk about general themes in terms of strengths and opportunities. In that area of educational leadership, his adjusted mean score was 3.056, which is an effective rating. So we'll start with any strengths and rather than go person by person, if you want to raise hands, we'll do it that way. So anyone who has some comments around strengths in the area of educational leadership. Mrs. Morgan. I've lost Mrs. Morgan as soon as I called her name. I'll see back and here I come.
There I am. Okay, so I would say that over the last 18 months, the superintendent has made some critical staff decisions that have really enhanced the depth and breadth of the leadership of the school district. And it goes through everybody in the cabinet to the individuals just below that level. And I think that's why there is so much confidence top to bottom in the school district in our forward momentum in terms of improving student achievement.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Mrs. Fisher was next.
Okay, so what I put down was excellent improvement in our academic services organization, team coordination, and culture. Incredible response for continued academic delivery during the COVID-19 emergency. We have increased school staff with focus on the entire child along with improved support opportunity for social, emotional learning and mental health.
Thank you. Mrs. Patrica.
The talent on cabinet. We've got a bunch. I think Ms. Morgan touched on this, the leading and learning sessions. Tying every decision the board makes to the strategic plan. Reliance on data in making systemic changes to the delivery instruction and other decisions made by the board. The comprehensive health plan with regard to educating the whole child. And then in terms of community engagement, the hiring of Adam Malloy for the coordinator of community engagement.
Thank you. Are there any other comments in the areas of strengths under educational leadership? Seeing none, we'll move to opportunities in the area of educational leadership. Mr. Bruno.
Madam Chair, I just want to note for the record that we still have a quorum. I know we're missing two board members, but we're still. Okay, so we just have one more board member join us, but I just want the public to know that we still have a quorum. And I don't know if someone can contact Ms. Giovinelli.
Okay, I'll try. Thank you.
Thank you. Continue, Ms. Bruno.
One last thing, I do want the public to also know that the chat feature is always turned off during our Zoom meetings. But do you want to make sure that's on the record and it's clear?
Yes, thank you very much. Okay. Ms. Patrica, I'm sorry. Yes, Ms. Morgan.
We're asking for opportunities, yes?
Yes.
Okay, so two opportunities I see in this area are really in one, which is finding new ways to engage stakeholders who don't engage in traditional means of communication and continuing to engage groups outside the district with superintendent appearances in front of those groups. You know, we did a really good job of getting out and asking people to understand the need for the half penny sales tax. I don't think that we should just go to them when we need something. I think we should. And.
I can't. Mr. Eldon, can you check with Ms. Gittens? She's having difficulty hearing.
If I can get someone to her office.
Thank you.
Should we stop until she can hear Ms. Dupree Bruno, Attorney Dupree Bruno?
For certain to Robert's rules, we do need to make sure that everybody is able to hear and can fully participate.
Thank you. Can you hear me, Ms. Fisher?
I can hear you now, Ms. Gittens.
Oh, okay. All right. I couldn't hear anything. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
I hear everybody. Yeah, I hear you now clearly. Yes.
Thank you.
Should I repeat my opportunities so Ms. Gittens can hear?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Okay, so my opportunities are to determine ways of communicating with those segments of the population that don't engage in traditional means of communication. And the other thing is getting out in front of groups, not just when we have an ask or an opportunity like the half penny sales tax, but all the time. And I will say that in reading Ms. Morgan's evaluation of the superintendent, she included cabinet and high-level administrators in that getting out to the community for groups. And I would agree that it shouldn't just be on the superintendent. It should be on the entire leadership team to include high-level administrators. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe it's Ms. Morgan, then Ms. Vaughn, and then Mrs. Gittens.
Well, I would concur with what Ms. Patrica said. I had two things. That was one. And the other is I do think we do, we need a dedicated COO.
Ms. Vaughn.
Okay, while I agree that there have been some very good people hired, I find that the hiring is. There are also some people on the other end. So for instance, let's see if I can capsulize this. One concern that I have is the assistant principal principal pools. And this has been brought up before, and I think that it needs addressing again. So principal, assistant principal pool, I feel like there needs to be some kind of a standardization that aren't just opened and closed when we need some principals. And there have been some issues with this in the past, and I think it's an issue of fairness. So I would like to see that for one in terms of fairness for people in assistant and principal pools. And the other thing is some of the job descriptions that we have looked at. In some cases, the minimum requirements have been reduced, and in some cases it makes sense. But in some other cases, I think we need to look at some of the requirements and especially when it comes to our specialized campuses. Most specifically, we need to look at people. I think there were some questionable decisions in terms of who was hired in the financial areas of our technical colleges. And I think that there was some questionable staffing there, not questionable in terms of the people themselves, but in terms of their lack of expertise in basically a community college setting. So that's why I am not 100% on the hiring practices.
Thank you.
Those are my comments.
Thank you. Mrs. Gittens?
Ms. Gittens, please unmute. Okay, I'm sorry. I couldn't hear before. Are we on number one? Are we overall? I'm not sure where we're at.
We're on number one, educational leadership, and we're looking at opportunities in that area. If you did not hear earlier, do you have strengths you would like to add? You can add those as well.
Okay. The strength I had that the kudos to the superintendent and staff for implementing procedures for COVID-19 to spearhead that in the community. To the two areas, I think, for possibilities are, as Ms. Vaughn mentioned, the pools. I've been around this a long time, and I've seen various processes for that pool situation. And I don't know if we've gotten to the right part yet. And there have been some that were better than others, and we changed people that were in charge of that. And then the whole system changed again. And perhaps it's something we need to look back at. What were some of the things we have done along the way? And to choose best practices in order to do that. So the pool situation is something I would like to look at. And I don't know if the next thing, the COVID thing, that was a kudo. However, also, I think we need to look at, and I don't know where this goes, about the process that we went through to, you know, get that started. It kind of changed along the way, and it became this and that. And if we were going to do something and it's presented to the board, we need to, we all agree on it. We need to move forward with it. If there's going to be a change, it should come back to the board to make a decision and not just. And I understand that the chair has that opportunity, but I just think we all need to be involved. I know when I was chair, that's one thing that I was told, that, you know, I don't make decisions on my own. And I think in this situation, we need to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Fisher.
Yes, thank you. So I had put down, I identified a continued need to review leadership positions for their qualifications, experience, and ethics. There have been some situations where there have been multiple complaints from staff members, you know, that they have been subjected to a hostile work environment or not treated equitably. So I think we really need to look at improving that and holding administrators accountable.
Thank you. Ms. Giovinelli.
I too, the strengths, because I didn't get it, I'm having a problem. My computer is not, the connection is not strong all of a sudden. So I don't know if it's the weather or what. But I know that the teachers and leaders, their professional development is very on track and has a great career path for people. And I think that that's, no one ever complains about that. So I think we have lots of opportunity at the district and throughout the district. So I think that that is really good for teachers and leaders. But the same as Ms. Fisher just mentioned, I too question some of the hiring practices in the pool. We want to make sure that everyone's in the pool at the time of hiring. So we do get a lot of complaints that things aren't done equitably and ethically and equally. So it's all the above because we want to make sure that we are allowing for opportunity as well for each and everybody to be able to apply and feel that they're being looked at fairly, and the opportunity is there for them, and they're not wasting their time. Some people have expressed to me that they don't even waste their time anymore because they don't feel like the position's already marked, earmarked for someone else, and they know it. So we just have to be very careful and conscientious of that. And that's good for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Patrica.
Madam Chair, I think this is directed to you. Can we, in the interest of time and other commitments that we may have, we are going very long. And could we commit to each other to only mentioning one subject once instead of everybody mentioning the pool? Like, we've all read the evaluations. This is to come up with a list of strengths and a list of opportunities. And if we're all repeating the same, we're going to be here all night.
So, yes, so I appreciate that. So board members, if something's already been mentioned, then it's on the list, and that'll be there for our perusal after. So let's try, in the interest of time, just to have our original comments stated. If someone has already stated something, we don't have to repeat it. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Jordan.
Thank you. And I apologize if this was already said because some of it I couldn't understand. Just to make sure that we are continually working on engaging parents for the success of their kids. That's all I have to say. Everybody else has said it all. Thank you.
Okay, before we move on to the second area, are there any additional strengths or opportunities under educational leadership? Ms. Gittens.
Am I on?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. One of the things I mentioned was considering our status as majority-minority district, that I think that there are issues and concerns that come with that designation as far as inclusivity and just culturally, we are different. And I don't know, and I know we've got, you know, Mr. Edie and his department and all of that. But it's almost kind of like a C goal approach that sometimes, you know, they go in and train people, and then they leave. And how are we sustaining that? How are we really hearing from the people that we haven't heard from? And I'm not giving an answer to it. I'm just saying, especially with COVID-19. But it has brought a whole different question to our district and our demographic. How do we reach everyone? And how do we sustain everyone? And it's not the same as what we've always done. It's not going to happen through emails and Peachjar and that type of thing. We've seen that with this COVID virus situation. So just addressing that, we really need to get down to it. And that kind of goes along with that task force. If the task force does not include someone from that area, parents, some students, some people that are going through what the situation is to try to help the rest understand what the issues are and maybe help come up with solutions, then we are not doing anything else than spinning our wheels and doing what we've always done. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens. So board members, you know, instead of repeating what someone else has said, please let's try to move this forward. And I just have one question. We have, I know we have a board member who has a meeting at 5:30. And so we will, if it's okay with you, we'll do our assignments tomorrow. I know it's on this agenda, but we, Ms. Bruno, can we make an accommodation to move it to tomorrow because of the time issue? Yes.
You can do that, Madam Chair, so long as we have a proper motion.
Okay. All right. So I'll hold that for the end then of this, okay?
Okay, everybody to move on?
Yes, let's move on, Ms. McLean. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So the second area is professional leadership. And in that area, the adjusted mean score for the superintendent was 2.856, which translates to a rating of effective. So we'll start with the strengths in the area of professional leadership. And I see Ms. Jordan's. Ms. Jordan.
I was thinking, I'm sorry. I'll get back with you.
Okay, so Mrs. Fisher.
Okay, so I think that there have been multiple efforts made to enhance and increase communication. And I know that there are some good suggestions for reaching the underrepresented areas, and I know we're working on that. So I think that's a strength.
All right, Mrs. Jordan, are you ready or would you like me to go on?
I can speak. I think that as far as maintaining the relationship with the board, I think that he really tries really hard to make sure that that is taking place with all of us. So I have to say that that is, to me, is a good thing. Continuous.
Thank you. Mrs. Vaughn.
The superintendent always displays a professional appearance at public appearances on the board and a professional demeanor in all public appearances, including community and board.
Thank you. Mrs. Morgan.
Ditto, Ms. Vaughn.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Patrica.
I would say that Dr. Atkins does not surround himself with yes people. Instead, he surrounds himself with diverse thinkers who frequently bring innovative solutions to the table, and they are debated, sometimes heatedly. And I think that that's a sign of strong leadership. And then the other thing is the breaking down of silos in the district. It's been a slow process, but it improves every year. And I think it gives all departments the ability to understand how their work impacts another department and the domino effect of a decision made in one department, how that can impact others. Those are the comments that have not yet been mentioned.
Thank you. Any additional strengths in the area of professional leadership? Mrs. Giovinelli.
Thank you, because I'm having a bad connection. But actually, he has a six. Thank you. Cause I'm, I'm having a bad connection, but um, actually, he has a six, he's working on a succession plan. And I think that's being proactive instead of reactive. And so I'm excited about that. I think that's something that's new, that he's added to his plate. So I think that's actually a very positive thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Patrica, did you have your hand raised again?
I do, yes. If we could ask Attorney Dupree Bruno, we've had a couple of comments from board members that they're having a hard time following. Or they're not lis, they're not hearing what's being said. I wonder whether that's going to impact the success of this meeting? And if there's something we should do in order to make sure that everybody can hear and see and understand what's being said?
Thank you. Thank you, Member Patrica. I do believe I heard that Mr. Givernelli had a difficult time hearing. I don't know, Madam Chair, if you want to just take, just see who's having a difficult time and then Mr. Eldon can see what he can do to assist. We do want to make sure.
Thank you very much. Any members who are having any difficulty with their connection, please raise your hand. Only for a moment. Only for a moment. It might be the storm. Yes, okay. Ms. Givernelli? Ms. Givern, please unmute, Ms. Givernelli. Ms. Givernelli?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can you, all right, so, sorry. Um, yes, I, I think it might be the, the connection, it's kind of intermittent. So I don't know, maybe the weather, but it was getting garbly goo, but y'all, I'm not freezing up, am I? So I, I'm thinking, okay, so I, cause I think it's my connection. And a little bit ago, it flashed up, you know, the connection's weak. So I don't think that that's, I think that's on my end, not your end. So I don't know.
That would be correct. And if I may, if anyone does actually lose or he becomes unusable, you can always use the dial-in numbers on the actual invite.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Eldon. Thanks, Ms. Bruno.
Did you have a question?
Yes, I did. I, I, okay, Ms. Givernelli was still saying something, so go ahead and let her finish. Take, unmute, Ms. Givernelli.
I'm sorry. The, the, when I put the VPN on, that's when I lose you too. And I don't know, I meant, I wanted to see if Mr. Eldon would, if that matters when I put the VPN on. Then I, it gets really messed up, so I had to take it off.
You shouldn't need it for this conference.
All right. Thank you. I'll just hang in there.
Okay. My, my question was, Ms. Givernelli mentioned something about the superintendent's succession plan. Did I hear that correctly? Can you elaborate on that?
Are you asking, Ms. Givernelli, to elaborate? Or did you want?
Cause I didn't quite hear what she said about that.
Okay.
Oh, I, am I, okay. I mentioned that he has, he's, he has a succession plan that was in his artifacts. So I, I, my, my thought is that in, that it's being proactive instead of reactive. And, and he's working on that. So it's, it's a plan in, in progress. But this is, that is something new that he's added to his plate than he had last year. So I, I'm giving him kudos for that. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other strengths in the area of professional leadership?
Just, why, could we ask Dr. Atkins on each round as well?
Of course. Dr. Atkins, would you like to add anything?
I've got nothing to add at, at this time. Maybe at the end, I wasn't prepared to speak, but.
Okay.
I appreciate the feedback.
Okay. Mrs. Fisher? Do you have a question? Over to the area of opportunities in the area of professional leadership. Mrs. Vaughn?
Okay, two things. Can I do two at once? First of all, as I said before, the superintendent himself is professional and ethical. And he is always with, between the two of us, very respectful. However, one of the opportunities that I see is that there have been several instances since I've been on the school board where he doesn't consistently enforce the same ethical and respectful behavior from staff members. And I'm talking about higher level. Staff members won't get into it, one word, watermark gate, not forgotten. And can I add a second one? So, all right. The other thing is, I, I think from last year, we have improved dramatically in the amount of information and the timeliness of the information. However, I think there, there is a true, there's a lack of true collaboration. As somebody mentioned in the, the school board self-evaluation, a lot of what we get is just foregone conclusion. Granted, that a lot of it is the day-to-day operation of the district that we are not involved in. But there are areas where it behooves us to be involved. Things that are specifically in our jurisdiction, our, our duty as school board members where the things are introduced to us as foregone conclusion without getting input. So I think we, we need more true collaboration.
Thank you. Mrs. Fisher?
I'm gonna say ditto to some of that and I will not repeat it. I'll just take my hand.
Okay. Thank you. This is Gittens.
Okay, yes. I got it. Um, one of the things, especially now in light of this, of us looking at a new way of work with this pandemic and all that it brings, is, and I talked about it in 2.03, about collaboration with other superintendents, with other groups and, you know, not, not to be demeaning or anything. And, but I know the superintendent has said, you know, he uses TED Talks and those types of things. I, and, and those are wonderful. But I think especially now, having that camaraderie with other districts and other educational organizations, because we need to be looking for other ideas. We don't always have the only idea. And I know it's been said in some of the meetings that we're different and, and ours is more complex. But I think this is a time that we need to look outside. We need to look at, and since a lot of conferences and whatever are now online instead of having to go to them, it creates another opportunity to join into some of those and, and maybe piece together some things that we can do. We've got to get outside of ourselves to come up with the answer and look outside. So I, I'm just, you know, saying to, to share more that way.
Great. Thank you. I saw another hand, but I, Mrs. Givernelli, did you have your hand up a moment ago?
Yeah. Um, the, I had, I had mentioned also about master board training and so forth. Like he missed, he didn't, hasn't really collaborated with us either is regarding, so, so we don't really have that connection. And so we had one in the fall in Naples and, and he didn't attend that. So there's been, there's been, and he doesn't go to the, to the June and December meetings or he goes, actually, I don't, yeah, I don't think he attends that. So that was one of my things, I think that to truly be a team, some of that has to have a little bit of that collaboration as well. So I think that's important, that has been part, a piece that's been missing.
Thank you. Are there any other comments in the area of opportunities under professional leadership? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next area, 3.0, which is community leadership. Dr. Atkins' adjusted mean score was a 2.968, which is an effective rating. So we'll go with comments on strengths under community leadership. Mrs. Fisher?
So I think that the superintendent's had some increased visibility in communication and collaboration with business stakeholders. And I hear a lot of positives regarding his approval with that business community representation.
Thank you. Good comments. Mrs. Jordan?
I believe that he does a great job as far as the community is involved. They do see him and even at the fairgrounds this year, I think every single, well, the majority of the posters had his face on almost every single one of them. So even the students understand who he is. And so I really think that that's a, that, that is a positive thing for me.
Thank you, Mrs. Jordan. Other comments?
The Envision Your Future event that was planned for the strategic plan was, would have been fantastic had it not been canceled because of COVID. The community leaders that he was able, Dr. Atkins was able to get in place to participate in that were, it was a very impressive cast of characters. I, I think that Dr. Atkins evidences his commitment to diversity and inclusion in making sure that Mr. Edie is contributing to decision-making at the highest levels of the district. And I do think he maintains an appropriate level of availability to the public. I don't think it's a realistic expectation for any of us to believe that he could meet with every parent, student, community member that wants to meet with him. Our, our district is simply too large, but I do believe that there is a very appropriate process in place to make sure that communications, I'm sorry, people are responded to appropriately.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Gittens?
This button seriously keeps moving for me. Anyway. During my year, which was the year we're looking at of being board chair and attending community events with the superintendent, I, that, that was very memorable. And we worked together quite well at some of those meetings, like the foundation meeting. And we pretty much tag teamed it and talked and discussed and were able to, what he didn't say about the district, I was be able to say. And so I think that was a positive for me.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Gittens. Additional comments? Seeing none, we'll move to opportunities under community. Mrs. Gittens?
I always wait for somebody else to go first, but one of the items, and I think I mentioned it on the 305, is the community meetings, like the town halls and those types of things. It, it, it kind of goes back to that communication. How are we reaching out to the people that we need to reach? And how can we step outside the box in different ways to reach the community? The, the positives for the superintendent in the area, area of community are very positive and very good. However, I kind of see them at a certain level. And we, we've kind of got to get to a, a different level. And then also, I wanted to mention, it has been brought up before about being able to see the superintendent's calendar. And I would like to at least discuss that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Vaughn?
Okay, two things under opportunities. One is that when we do go out to the, to the community forums, what I have seen is, is more imparting information, going out and being informational, giving information, and not really having the best means of receiving input from, from the people who are, are attending. That's, that's one. And the second thing is, and actually, Dr. Atkins and I touched on this a couple of weeks ago, most of our schools have excellent relationships with reaching out. You know, if, if a parent sees, I don't know, Cypress Middle has reached out to them, they are a whole lot more likely to reply than if they see something from the school district. So I think as a district, we need to capitalize on the already existing communication avenues that the schools have to enhance our people actually coming in and paying attention to district forums.
Thank you. Mrs. Fisher?
So ditto for that, the school's culture and reaching out to their, not only their staff, but their parents and kids. And, and there is some perception with some community members that the superintendent himself is difficult to access. So I hope we can do some work in, you know, explaining that to people because he is only one person and this is a very big district.
So, thank you. Thank you. Mrs. Gittens?
Um, ditto to the ones that were already said and kind of a, a caveat to it is, I have brought this up before about our method of communicating to the public is on a level that I believe is, is up here where, and it's just like Ms. Fisher was saying and, and the others, that the schools, you know, can communicate better with the parents. That's because they communicate closer to their level. And it's not that we're demeaning anyone, but again, the average reading level in the US is sixth grade. And when we explain things at a, you know, 13th grade level, it, it asks, it keeps people away because they don't feel like, well, I don't understand this, so I'm not going to participate. I'm not going to be embarrassed. So we've got to find a way to just bring it down to just simplistic so people can understand what it is that we're doing and what we need them to do and how they can help their children in a way that they can understand easily.
Thank you. Mrs. Givernelli, did you have your hand raised?
Um, actually, one of the things that I wanted to see more of is the, and some people are disagreeing, but some are saying the same thing, is more approachable and, and not seem so, so distant and what, and what that looks like. And I think with COVID, we're gonna have, we're gonna have issues with that regardless and that, and what it looks like. So I get that. That's not, that's no fault of his own. So he just, I, I'd like the forums because that did put him out there and that is opportunity. But, and somebody mentioned about the, you know, the receiving aspect. We just need to be more, like I said, approachable for all of us at the district. You know, what that looks like is something we need to work on and do better at, I think. In making sure that we're not, that we are approachable, you know, and that he can, he can, we can get to him. But you know, the people aren't, people can get to him, if that makes sense. So, cause that's, that's what I get. They, you know, staff does circumvent, but somehow we need to make, put the, that comfort and that he's available to people.
Okay. Are there any additional opportunities that have not yet been listed? All right. Thank you. So we'll move on to standard four. Excuse me. That is executive leadership. And executive leadership, Dr. Atkins' adjusted mean score was a 3.028, which is an effective rating. So we'll begin with strengths in the area of executive leadership. Mrs. Fisher?
So I think our response to the COVID pandemic has been outstanding. And I know that it is a changing vehicle at all times because there's so much different information coming from our partner agencies. But I think this, that the superintendent has led this district in a, in a very professional and responsive in a, in a very professional and responsive manner. And I think that that has been a feather in his cap this year.
Thank you. Other comments? Okay, Ms. Patrica.
So I have a few here. I think that the internal audit function did exactly what it was supposed to do in finding issues at one of our technical colleges. That was definitely a strength. The increasing use of technology has really placed the school district of Lee County ahead of almost every K-12 and post-secondary institution, not just in the state of Florida, but across the country. And I, I think we saw that, you know, there was some discussion earlier about reaching out to other districts to determine what they're doing. Well, districts were reaching out to us during the rollout of distance learning to determine how we were doing what we were doing. And it's because of our pre-existing commitment to the appropriate use of technology in classrooms. Safety and security, that's a, that's a really big issue. And I have found at every turn that we are on top of this. We are constantly looking at changes required by the state. And we're also looking at those grand jury reports that are coming out and making sure that we're, where we're supposed to be. The expansion of the legal department will provide for training opportunities for our staff that I don't think we would have had without the expansion of that department. And finally, I don't, I really don't know that there's a district in the state of Florida that has a better relationship with Telkens Belk. And I think that that's because of Dr. Atkins' experience in human resources. But I'll tell you what, we go to those FSBA conferences and very rarely do you hear anything positive about teacher association or support personnel association relationships with the district. Those are my comments, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patrica. Any other comments in the areas of strengths in executive leadership? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to opportunities under executive leadership. Mrs. Gittens? Were you raising your hand?
I kind of wasn't, looking for my spot here because I kind of lost it. I guess one of the things that I would admonish the superintendent, and I, you know, will talk to him one-on-one about some of the things, is to really to review and digest everyone's thoughts and comments, which kind of leads me to another point about this whole process that I personally have always done an extra document that has, here's what I see and here is the suggestion for improvement. And I think having a type of a document along, you know, with this would help. That way the superintendent would have it in his hands and be able to see exactly why I said what I said or someone else said what they did. And it's almost like the, the mid-year, we have that spot in the process that we can put that, but we don't have it with this one. So it comes down to, you know, a meeting like this where we say some of the things, but we may not get everything out. So I just suggest that we fix that, that we have a better process for giving him feedback that he can go to. Sometimes with the executive leadership, no, I'm not going to say it, I will tell him personally. Communication, of course, is what I said, and communication all up and down the line. So that's why I have to say that.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Fisher.
So I had down, consider defining expectations of district and school-based leadership in regard to compliance. I know there have been some issues with that. And also, I'd like to see us continue looking into our investigation process with, in regard to fairness and equity for employees and due process.
Thank you. Mrs. Jevon, did I see your hand?
Actually, people have already said some of the things that I had as well, but I wanted to bring up the fact that sometimes he's a little delayed in getting us the information that sometimes we hear from the, from outside, what's the word that someone likes to use, special interest groups. And so I think as soon as there's an issue, we need to be made aware of it so that we're not blindsided by these special interest groups and, and employees in the community because that seems to be an issue still. And I, I have to agree with Ms. Fisher regarding the due process, but I think the whistleblower hotline is going to assist in, and I look forward to those changes. And I think that will really help a lot. We have to, I think we also need to be more, have more accountability regarding our failures and our weaknesses and embrace them and that way that we can make the changes and move on, like with the audit and so forth. And, and just taking ownership of these, the deficiencies will be a big plus in the long, long run. So I believe that, you know, just getting the information to us sooner is probably more important than, like I said, the delay, that is probably more alarming because that, that's where the trust is, is lost. So, you know, and then, then when someone asks the question, then we, we are considered troublemakers or agitators and we're just trying to do our oversight job and asking the questions. So I think if we all work together on things, the outcome will be better for students. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Gittens.
I guess the best thing for me to, way to say this is the superintendent, I see his job as we're a wheel and he's the center spoke in that wheel that connects all of us together through our communication with him. So his communication to each of us and the staff is going to make sure that we as a governance team roll along smoothly. And if there's a disconnect in any of those spokes to any of us, the wheel does not go. So it puts a lot of responsibility on him, but the communication piece, he's, he's the nugget in the middle that makes sure we all get the same thing at the same time as far as being involved and being included and listening to our thoughts and, and you know, appreciating who we are as individuals, that we are not all going to be the same, that we are not all going to think that everything that he and his staff decide to do is wonderful. But an example, a meeting that he set up for me on last Friday, and I met with, who was it, building and construction and, and academic services. And some of the things in that conversation that I heard helped me understand questions that I've had for a long time. And I have felt up to this point that there was that great divide that I could not talk to staff. And yet it's, that was very positive. And so now there are some of the things that they're doing that I understand better. So therefore I can champion in the community. But if I'm not a part of it and understand it, I can't wave my palm if I don't even know what the cheer is. So that's kind of how I have to say that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there other comments on the opportunities under executive leadership? Mrs. Jevon Alley.
One more thing too. Actually, we, we've actually spoken about this, about the Guardian program. And I think we need to revisit that and metal detectors regarding, and someone else mentioned safety. It's so important and proper threat assessments at each school. I think that, that we need another, probably workshop or briefing on that and make sure that things are being addressed because I, I'm, there's some red flags there. And with our budget being decreased possibly, but at least if it doesn't happen this year, it could be next year. I think in light of that, we need to look at the guardianship monies. And I know there's been some charter schools that has, shows an interest in that because that's a conversation that he and I had. So I think that's opportunity. We don't want to leave any money left on the table. And, and I, and I believe that's what we're doing there. And I think that's going to be really important to look at that. That's one of the budget things that I wanted to kind of talk about too. So it's, but this is, that's a board thing, but I know it's, it's in the back of his mind because we've spoken about it. So I think it's something we really need to look at now with COVID. So that's, thought I'd mention that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments, strengths or opportunities in the area of executive leadership? Dr. Atkins, do you have any comments that you would like to make?
I, I don't know if Ms. Fisher has her hand raised, if she had any other.
Yeah, I, I did. I'll, I'll just do this now. It's kind of like an overall comment, but I, I want to say that I feel like Dr. Atkins looks to the future and as evidenced with the strategic plan and Envision 2030. And I also appreciate the frequent updates we've been getting, especially since the pandemic started, and I hope we'll continue with that because I think that's been invaluable as far as making sure that we all have the same information at the same time. And so I just want to appreciate the efforts that have been made by the superintendent and his staff.
Thank you.
Continue with improvement.
Thank you. My favorite term.
I know. Ms. Patrica, did you have your hand?
Well, it feels like we're wrapping up since we've been through the four categories. And although the COVID crisis did not fall in the time of this evaluation, I am looking forward to the data so that we can evaluate that next year. I will say that the response from the superintendent on down has been ridiculous. It's been so good. I mean, the, every single employee of this school district has stepped up and just done what was right. And the attitude was set from day one by Dr. Atkins, failure is not an option here. We will do this, we will make it work. And we really have modeled some best practices for the rest of the state to follow. I understand that there are issues in terms of, you know, the internet divide or the internet, whatever the, I'm sure Trey Davis could tell me the correct term. But I, I'm confident that superintendent staff will continue to work on those things as we roll out, whatever it is we're going to roll out in the fall. I just, I didn't feel like this discussion could go by without recognizing the tremendous leadership, not just in education, but in the entire community. The, the level of comfort that has been provided in my own home by being able to send my kids to school every day for a significant period of time has, has just, has provided me personally, and I know other parents as well, with the ability to get through this thing. And the recognition that education is a primary necessary activity of our society, the way it was rolled out helped our community to understand that. So kudos to Dr. Atkins and his leadership there and his staff as well.
Sorry for interrupting, digital divide.
Yes.
Trey.
Thank you.
Dr. Atkins, did you have any comments?
Yes, just wanted to, first of all, thank everybody for, for your input. I think this has been a very, very valuable conversation with the board. I appreciate the professionalism and I certainly appreciate the, the input. There's been a lot of really great suggestions brought up in the opportunities section of this. I've taken notes from what everyone has said. And I think that we have a lot of good stuff to work with. So I just wanted to, to thank every single one of you for that, for that because I think this has been very, this for me personally has been very valuable. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, and so next steps in terms of the process will be that it's your next meeting with Mrs. Cook. You'll talk about some of your next steps for your board as a whole. In the past, the superintendent has, has come forward with some, some action steps that he plans to address those opportunities that were listed and also things that he will make sure are continued so that those strengths remain strengths. So with that, I will turn the meeting back over to Mrs. Fisher. Thank you so much for your time. Oh, I'm sorry, I see Ms. Gittens has her hand up.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. I mentioned before that in our process, it does, in, in the guidelines, it does say at the bottom, we can talk about process and forms and all of that type of thing. And I did mention a suggestion, I don't want that to go by the wayside. I think we need to have connected to this or an additional page or an additional column or something so that we can add those comments and suggestions formally with the evaluation and not as an extra document.
Okay, and my understanding is that that would come before the board for approval if there is a change to be made to that evaluation instrument, so, or to that process. So I would defer to Mrs. Fisher as to how you might go about making that change happen.
And then I might, if I may, Ms. Dupree Bruno, I don't know if you would comment on that, if we wanted to make changes to the evaluation or additions. That would have to be a vote?
To, to make changes to the evaluation at this time?
Changes or additions.
To the instrument, to the instrument for future use.
Yes. So my recommendation would be for the board to put their thoughts down and perhaps come back and discuss those changes. And then you would vote on the, the changes you want to adopt in the evaluation.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate that. Okay, at this time, I, I don't think it would take us very long if we wanted to go ahead and do the assignments, the committee assignments. It shouldn't take us longer than 10 or 15 minutes at the most. And I understand then that Ms. McClung, you would facilitate that for us?
Sure, I can do that.
Okay, so if you'll pull up your assignments.
So I can share my screen in just a moment, which has the same sheet that you have that's called the shortlist. Oh, I'm sorry, I guess it's, has her hand raised?
Just wondering whether we could thank Ms. Cook for her service because I don't know.
Oh, she's still here, okay, I thought you were.
I've been taking notes.
My, my apologies.
No, that's fine, I was taking notes for Ms. McClung, helping her out.
Thank you. Yes, thank you very much for your leadership and input today. We really appreciate that. And then we look forward to scheduling our last session with you.
Yeah, I'll get in touch with you and, and Dr. Atkins and we'll have some suggested dates and then you can take them to the board for their, their choice.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Thank you all, hang in there and we will talk later.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Okay, and then Ms. Jordan and then Ms. Gittens.
Oh, I, I'm sorry, I just, I have a meeting at 5:30, that's all I needed to say.
Okay. Okay, so do you have a, something that you would like to volunteer for? And then I'll, I'll let Ms. McClung do this.
No, I raised my hand because I have a comment that about, are you talking to me or?
I'm talking, yeah, I'm talking to Mrs. Jordan, her hand was up first. Yeah, and she has.
Ms. Fisher, that's okay, I'm going to stay, I already told them I may be a few minutes late. So this is going to take a minute, I just want to make sure that you are aware of it.
Okay, thank you very much, I'm aware of it, yes. All right, Ms. McClung, go ahead, honey.
I believe Ms. Gittens had her hand up.
Yes, the question I have, because what I'm referring to is not on the list, to discuss the census liaison position, since Ms. Vaughn is no longer doing it. And the census is something that is continuing on until October. And I wanted to know that, okay, Ms., I would definitely like to continue with that if possible. I see Ms. Vaughn's hand up.
All right, thank you. I'm going to ask that we go ahead with the shortlist and get. I'm going to ask that we go ahead with the shortlist and get our advisory committees and everything done so Ms. Jordan can get to her meeting. And then we'll, we'll bring the census discussion at the end. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I, I do have the shortlist and I'll, I'll be able to type directly into that. So I will share that with you and talk you through that. Are you now able to see that? It's, yep, here it is. Okay, so you may recall back in November that we had talked about changing, instead of going from November to June and then maybe having some changes that we would go from, from July 1 to June 30. And there had also been a discussion around if board members had been on a committee for one year, they had the opportunity to renew for another year with that committee. But since this one would have been a year and a half, that everyone would rotate this time. And then you would have a, a different one this year. Now that said, after we had that meeting, I believe that district advisory committee was changed for, with, from Mrs. Gittens to Mrs. Fisher and the insurance task force. So you two flipped. So is it my understanding, but it appears here that, that you're going to continue with that one. So you will have had it for a full year now. Is that correct?
Well, I would, I would like to do something else if I could. But if I have to stay with that one, then that's fine. There are other advisory boards that I would like to look at doing that other members have had for some time, so.
Well, let's go through the others. And if we come to that and there's, there's that opportunity, then we'll, we'll talk about that when we get to that particular one. So let's start with the construction advisory committee. Mrs. Giovinelli has had that for two years. Ms. Patrica, I see your hand.
I'm just, I'm wondering whether Ms. Fisher is willing to give up DAC? Because I'd really like DAC. If not, I will turn my attention to a different committee as well.
Yes, ma'am. I would be happy to do that.
Awesome. You rock. Thank you.
Okay.
So do you.
Okay, so is there anyone else? Everyone okay with Ms. Patrica doing DAC? Okay, so I'm going to put her name in here. Okay, let's go back to construction advisory. Do we have people who, anyone interested specifically in construction advisory? Mrs. Jordan.
I was going to say, if I have to give up EDAC because I love EDAC. So if I have, if I have to give that up, I would take construction or finance.
No, I can't see everyone with this up. So if, since you have it on your screen, I'm going to stop sharing. I'll continue to type into it, but I need to be able to see everyone's face. Okay, thank you. So Mrs. Jordan, I'm, I'm sorry, you said that you would be interested in which one?
Either finance or construction if nobody, if I have to give up EDAC.
Okay, and I see.
If nobody with EDAC, I'll keep EDAC.
Mrs. Morgan, let's start with construction. Anyone else interested in construction other than Mrs. Jordan? Mrs. Morgan? Mrs. Giovinelli? Mrs. Vaughn? Sounds like we have a lot of people who are interested. Let's start with.
Did you say Mrs. Morgan?
Yes, please.
Oh, I was just holding my hand up for construction.
Okay, so we have Mrs. Morgan, Mrs. Giovinelli and Mrs. Vaughn, all interested in construction. Is that correct? Yes?
Move off construction.
So.
One of several.
I would have stayed on it, but I see there's interest. So that's okay. I don't mind, you know, I believe in sharing the wealth. So I will, you can take my name down, you know. But I was kind of like Ms. Jordan was about EDAC, which I like EDAC too, but I don't want to take that. So I'm, I'm, so I get it. So if Miss Morgan wants construction, then sure. I mean, I don't.
Okay, so Mrs. Jordan, you had mentioned construction or finance. So if Mrs. Morgan is, would like.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, I'm okay with, with Ms. Morgan doing that. I was just saying, if I had to leave EDAC, they were the two that I would, yeah.
Okay. Okay, is anyone else interested in finance? Is Ms. Jordan is willing to switch finance from EDAC?
Okay, maybe can we say, does anybody else want EDAC? Because then that would make a difference.
Does anyone else want EDAC? Mrs. Vaughn wants EDAC.
Vaughn.
Okay, and we had made an agreement that we would, since you would have been with them for over a year, that we would switch off. So I will put Mrs. Vaughn on EDAC. Okay, that brings us back to.
So yes, then I would, then I would want, if Betsy's on that, then I would definitely want to do, then finance.
Okay, finance. Okay, the next one on the list is continuous systemic improvement. And this year it has been Mrs. Morgan, so.
I'm sorry, Ms. McClung, I don't know that you saw Ms. Gittens had her hand up for finance as well.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Gittens. Okay, finance as well.
Yes, I'm interested in finance, please. And so let me ask you a question. So the ones above that, the insurance, finance, equity and all that are all of the advisory boards. The others are just various groups and organizations. So we're just dealing with that top section. Correctly.
Yes, right now. And I was just going in order. And the reason that I had ordered for finance was because you have just switched over, you, you switched to November's task force. So since you have not been there a full year.
Is that going to preclude me from going to anything else?
I, I don't think it would if there was one that someone else was not interested in. But since the other people have been with theirs for a full year, that's, that's why I was going with them first.
And there are several, seven official board advisories. So one each would be an equitable way to go.
Well, I had mentioned previously an interest in finance when we had talked about this before. And the way it turned out, Ms. Patrica was able to keep it. But I, I had mentioned a while back that I was interested in finance.
Oh, we had also agreed that, that everyone would maintain their original, the ones that they were on in November through June. And so when you didn't do that, that puts you in for, for a different, that, that was a switch. So I, I, I'm fine with whatever you all want to decide. It was just that Mrs. Jordan had, has not been with a different one. But let's see if there are others as well. We still have continuous systemic improvement. So we have equity and diversity has been changed. And then curriculum advisory needs a new person as well. Okay, I see Mrs. Giovinelli's hand.
I would be willing to do insurance task force. I would like to do that.
Okay. Okay, then that opens up. Okay, so we still have two people interested in finance. Then we have Mrs. Jordan and Mrs. and Mrs. Gittens interested in finance. Are either of you interested in curriculum or the continuous systemic improvement committee?
Well, if Ms. Jordan wanted to keep equity and diversity for another year, just saying.
Mrs. Gittens?
No, Ms. Vaughn, Betsy wants that. I mean, I would take that forever.
Oh, okay. All right, I'm sorry. Okay.
So we still need someone for the curriculum advisory and the CSI advisory. And the two people that I do not have right now are Mrs. Gittens and Mrs. Fisher.
And I'll just wait till the end and take whatever is there. I'm fine because every one of those advisory committees is a great learning opportunity. And there's a lot, lot new going on. So I always enjoy moving from one to the other.
Thank you. Mrs. Jordan, do I see her? Oh, you, you lit up, but I don't think her hand was up. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. So what, what are we saying right now? That only continuous improvement or what else?
Curriculum advisory are the two other than finance, which I had originally put Mrs. Jordan in. Then we still have curriculum advisory and CSI.
So are you saying that because I'm in the, what else, what am I in now? Insurance, that I have to stay there?
Well, Mr. Giovinelli offered to take that if you wanted to move. That would mean that you and Mrs. Jordan would need to decide who's going to do finance.
Well, like I said, several months ago, when we went through discussing about committees and all that, I asked for finance and I was denied that at that time. And Ms. Patrica was able to keep it past the two years. And I had stated, you know, an interest in doing it a while back. So, I mean.
She did do that. At the foundation, she did.
That was at the foundation in November when the entire team agreed to keep all of their respective spots until June because we were changing the full process. After that agreement, then you, you and Mrs. Fisher agreed to flip flop. But that was not part of the original full team agreement. So yes, I understand you did indicate an interest at that time. But the reason you weren't able to move at that time was not because Ms. Patrica was allowed to go longer, but because the team as a whole made an agreement to maintain their committees at that point.
Okay, so. So I guess it's just you're waiting on me to decide if I'm going to give that up and take something else. Is that correct?
Or Mrs. Jordan, one of you, whoever wants finance or is willing to move to either curriculum or CSI.
And this is for what, two years?
No, it's till next June. It's for one year. And then at the end of that year, but the decision before was at the end of the year, if the person who had that committee wanted to continue for a second year, they had that first option, but they were not required to, to make it for a second year. And that was based on the board advisory committee recommendation that they enjoyed working with, with a liaison for more than one year because it gave them time to get to know them better and to feel like they had a better relationship.
Well, it sounds like I'm painted into a corner. So I will just, since no one else is going to move, I guess I would have to. And you said continuous or what else?
Or curriculum.
Continuous systemic then.
And I love that committee. So I would be more than happy to have you join us. Great addition to that committee. Thank you. And then Mrs. Fisher, curriculum advisory?
Whatever's left is good for me, yes.
Okay, so let me quickly make sure that I have every one one here and that you've switched. Mrs. Gittens, I'm sorry, back on. Construction advisory, Mrs. Morgan. CSI, Mrs. Gittens. Curriculum advisory, Mrs. Fisher. District advisory, Ms. Patrica. Equity and diversity, Ms. Vaughn. Finance, Ms. Jordan. And insurance task force, Ms. Giovinelli. Is that correct? Okay.
No. I need you. I don't think that sounded right. Can you repeat that?
Construction, Mrs. Morgan.
Yes, okay.
By Ms. Gittens.
Yes.
Curriculum, Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
DAC, Ms. Patrica.
Yes.
EDAC, Ms. Vaughn. Finance, Ms. Jordan. And insurance, Ms. Giovinelli.
Perfect.
Okay, Mrs. Gittens.
Yes, can I at least be considered then for ISOC? It's in the next section down.
We're coming down to the next section. Okay, actually, the middle section has their board legislative liaison and FSBA board of directors. So the FSBA board of directors was decided at the last board meeting. And that was Ms. Jordan with Mrs. Morgan as the alternate. So we go back up to our board legislative liaison. And that person is the state federal and FSS, FSBA legislative liaison. Okay. Okay, so Ms. Gittens, do I see that you're interested in that?
Yes, please.
Okay. All right, and alternate? You would like to be.
I thought that was a two-year term though.
I believe the two.
Unless I'm, unless I'm mistaken, but I believe that is a two-year term. So the mission has changed.
But that means then, Ms. Jordan, that you would do that as well as FSBA director?
Well, they're going to have that other one that's coming down too, which is the.
I understand that.
Come on, guys.
Whatever, that's. But I'm saying, there's a two-year term.
What I understood was that the board of directors was a two-year term, but the other liaison was a one-year term. Now, I may be incorrect, but when I spoke with Susan, that's.
When I did it, it was two years.
It was two years. Okay. So that would mean that Mrs. Jordan and Mrs. Gittens would continue in that role if that's a two-year term. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I'm copying that. Okay, so let's go down for the third area. Coalition for a drug-free Southwest Florida. And Mrs. Fisher, that has been your baby for a very long time.
25 years. But if anyone else would like it, that's fine. I mean, I'm going to stay with it anyway because I'm on the board of directors.
Is there anyone else that would like to be a liaison with that? Ms. Vaughn? Like that, okay. I'll put Mrs. Vaughn, and we know Mrs. Fisher will still be involved as a member of the board of directors.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Betsy.
I'm sorry, Cindy, can you go back to the board legislative liaison? What was the decision on that?
Apparently it is a two-year term, so that will remain as Mrs. Jordan as the liaison and Mrs. Gittens as the alternate.
Okay, thank you.
But they're finishing up their two-year term. So this is, they're in year number two. So that needs to be noted.
Yes.
It'll be two years.
Thank you.
Thank you. Head start, early head start policy council. Mrs. Morgan. Okay? Okay, keep going. The Horizon Council is automatically the chair. The independent sales tax, sir, tax oversight committee. Is that the one that you were interested in, Mrs. Gittens?
Yes, I was.
Okay.
Cindy, I'm sorry, that's the finance person is the ISOC, ISOC person.
Oh, I see. FSC liaison, so it's an automatic. Okay, I understand. Thank you.
Is it, but is it really or do we just, I mean, was that something we voted on? Or was that was something we just decided? Like, is it really? I mean, do we, I mean, I'm just curious.
I believe it's in the board policy, but I'd have to look to be sure.
Okay.
Okay, we can check board policy. Let's see, actually, Mrs. Brent. Mrs. Brent, could, thank you. So we'll skip that one for right now and go down to the instructional calendar committee. God bless you, Ms. Patrica. Okay. All right, learning for life. Anyone interested in doing the learning for life this past year? That was Mrs. Morgan, Ms. Vaughn. Thank you. School health advisory committee. Mrs. Fisher, thank you. The fair.
That's, I mean, I'll continue to do that if nobody want. It's just getting the schools involved with the artwork. So I'll be more than happy to continue it if nobody else wants it.
Thank you, Mrs. Jordan. Strategic planning steering committee. I see Ms. Morgan. I see Ms. Morgan's hand going up there. Okay, thank you. Uh, the chair automatically sits on the foundations. Many uncommon friends. Okay, I see two, I see Melissa, Mrs. Giovinelli, and I see Ms. Patrica.
I, I would like to keep that. I, um, just now getting really involved in that, and I would like to keep that.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna fight with her.
Okay, then we'll put Mrs. Giovinelli, thank you.
Thank you. I'll give you Bab.
What is that?
It's a two meetings a year. Four or five minutes.
Okay, so value adjustment board. Okay, Ms. Patrica, Ms. Morgan. Um, who would like?
Ms. Morgan, you can have it.
Well, the.
The alternate.
Need an alternate.
So if I may, on, um, ISOC, it was, I, I don't think it's in the policy, and I know that Attorney Dupree Bruno will confirm that in a minute. Um, it was part of our reorg discussion last year. We went back and forth between it being the chair and being, um, the finance, the finance liaison, and the board decided at that time that it would be the finance liaison.
Right. If I may, um, I have to leave, I'm already fifteen minutes late to a meeting, so will you just all let me know what the outcome is for whatever?
Thank you, Ms. Jordan.
Thank you, and I apologize, I just. I'm already late.
Yes, enjoy your EDAC meeting, thank you.
Thank you.
So it sounds as though at the reorganization meeting, the decision was between it being the chair sitting on that committee and the finance. And I do recall that discussion that was over at the foundation office, correct? So it, it, at this point, unless the board wants to have a discussion around changing that, it is the finance liaison. Ms. Giovinelli, then Ms. Vaughn.
Um, I would like to see it changed, um, to allow opportunity for others and to be able to do it, because otherwise, um, I think it gets a little, I think we need to, it's a, it's not a big deal and it could be changed, because it, obviously, the money's changing, so. I mean, so I, my, I wouldn't be opposed to allow an opportunity for Gwen to do that. I think she's wanting to get into finance and she didn't, so I think that this, um, allows for that second set of eyes. So, um, and I think she'll report back and we'll get updates, and I think it'll be a, a great fit for Gwen.
Thank you, Mrs. Vaughn.
I was gonna suggest the same, the same thing. That, um, because it's not in, in policy, and I don't know why it has to be the finance person. And, you know, now we have all of our, um, meetings, um, videoed, and so if the person does the ISOC, um, needs to catch up on what's going on in, in finance, which may even be a totally different agenda. I think it should be opened up to somebody other than the finance, um, committee liaison.
Ms. Giovinelli?
And I know Ms. Jordan's not here, but I mean, she is on quite a bit of, of committees here, and that, uh, I think is spreading her a little bit thin. So I think that, I, I think it needs to be, um, equitable here. Thank you.
Mrs. Fisher, so, I'm sorry, um, Ms. Patrica, and then I'll go back to Mrs. Fisher.
I, I have zero issues with changing it up. I'm just want, wondering from Ms. Dupree Bruno's perspective, Robert's rules of order, without, uh, Ms. Jordan being here, is that a decision we can make?
You still have a quorum, so you're able to move forward with that decision. Um, with regards to the policy, I will confirm that it is not in the policy, and that will be policy one point two zero, so it is not addressed. So you guys would have to have a proper motion in a second and see if you can get a consensus.
So, in order to do that, I will turn it back to Mrs. Fisher.
Yes, okay, so then at this time, I will entertain a motion for, um, the, uh, ISOC committee representative. Miss, this.
I think you're changing something that you decided before, so I think the motion is to, um, not have the ISOC committee person be the financial liaison.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Bruno. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to have the finance representative and the ISOC representative be separate, two different people.
Move, I'm, my move, that.
Okay, so what we would say, the member Giovinelli is that I move that the, um, ISOC committee person is not, is a separate person from the financial person.
All right, I already failed, right?
Thank you, Ms. Bruno. A second. Ms. Vaughn, a second. Ms. Vaughn seconds the motion.
I second the motion that the, um, two positions, ISOC and financial advisory, be separate.
You don't have to restate the motion when you second, you're fine.
That's what I needed to do.
Any discussion? Ms. Patrica?
This, this might be our new way of work, but we have never, ever made motions for consensus. Um, and it.
That's what I thought.
The motion feels rather formal and action-like. Um, so I have concerns surrounding that.
We're not, we're not taking an actual vote, but I wanna make sure it's very clear what we're doing, so I would request that we do it properly with the motion, because this is a meeting, even though it is a workshop, but we will still try to move forward with the consensus. We're not taking an actual action vote, if that makes sense. I just wanna make sure everybody knows what they're talking about and what's on the table, what's on the floor, I should.
Then, then we're looking for consensus to have the, um, finance, uh, advisory committee representative and the ISOC committee representative be two separate individuals. So then, in that respect, I'll just ask for, all those in favor, please raise your thumb up. And.
Me.
Okay, so we have consensus. So now officially, we are gonna have two different representatives for those two committees. Thank you.
Thank you. And I know that she was interested in ISOC. You have your hand up for comment?
Yeah, the comment was, Ms. Patrica was saying that it was an action thing, but this is not a policy. It was not a policy, it was just something that we had decided, so therefore it's not in need of an official action vote. Right, right, that's why we just did the consensus.
So anyone other than Ms. Gittens interested in that position? Great, so we will have Ms. Gittens. So, um, I would like to read them all back to you, which I know is gonna take a minute, but I just wanna be sure that we have these correct before we move forward.
Hi, excuse me, Ms. McClung, we didn't do student advisory.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All board members.
It says all.
Oh, it's all board members, I'm sorry. Okay.
Okay, so I believe that we were in agreement on the board advisory committee, so I won't repeat those. So I, um, I'll go with board legislative liaison. We'll continue as before with Mrs. Jordan and Ms. Gittens as the alternate. FSBA board of directors is Ms. Jordan and Ms. Morgan as alternate. Coalition for Drug-Free Southwest Florida, Ms. Vaughn. Head start, Ms. Morgan. Uh, the Horizon Council is the chair. ISOC, Ms. Gittens. Calendar committee, Ms. Patrica. Learning for life, Ms. Vaughn. Health advisory, Ms. Fisher. Student advisory, I'm sorry, not student advisory, Southwest Florida and Lee County Fair, Ms. Jordan. Student board advisory is everyone. Uh, strategic planning steering committee, Mrs. Morgan. Foundation is the chair. Uncommon friends, Ms. Giovinelli. And value adjustment board, Ms. Morgan with Ms. Patrica as the alternate. Everyone in agreement? All right, I will with pleasure turn, turn the meeting back over to Mrs. Fisher. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Patrica has her hand up.
So, um, I hate to bring this subject up, but, um, I do think we need, um, some guidance from the board regarding the Astero Education Initiative. I have been serving as the liaison on that committee since, um, gosh, 2017. I remember having a discussion during reorg in 2017 that, um, the district three representative would, would be the liaison or the representative to organizations like that and like the Benita Astero Association of Realtors. Um, so we never added that to the list, but I'm wondering, given the recent conversations, whether it's necessary for us to add that to the list.
Um, Mrs. Morgan, you want to direct that?
Ms. Gittens. Madam Chair, I, I think that whenever we have these liaison positions, that we make sure it's very clear for the record. So I, if Ms. Patrica wants to make sure that it's clear for the record, I think that we should move forward with that and see what the board does and solidify that and make sure that we have it for the record. It's very important.
So, and since that is not a policy issue, then, uh, we can do it with consensus, yes. Okay, all right, so, um, Mrs. Patrica, are you proposing that we add this to our list of, um, of, um, committees, liaison committees?
I get, I get concerned, uh, the, the same reason why we didn't add it to the, the list of committees back in 2017. I mean, if, if we are going to be adding every group that we're engaged with to this list, this meeting that we're having right now is going to take five hours each.
Yes.
Year, so, no, I, I don't know that it needs to necessarily be added to the list, but I would like some, um, consensus recognition that that is in fact what I do. I serve as the liaison to the, um, Astero Education Initiative Task Force.
So then, board members, um, we agree that we were all aware that, um, Mrs. Patrica, as the district three member, serves on the Astero Education Initiative Task Force. And I have a comment from Ms. Gittens. Yes, I just find it a little bit strange that this was never brought up until I brought up the fact that they, that she was, uh, participating and representing us, which is policy, and we did not agree to it. Something that happened back in 2017 should have been placed in policy. It was not placed in policy. The policy was not followed. And that is just the, the truth of the matter. If we want to going forward, do that. But my concern is that this is, uh, i- if, if it hadn't been brought up, would we have brought it up at this point to make it a policy? It's been going on and going on, and, uh, there is no official, uh, statement. We have not, if, if Ms. Patrica had been coming back and saying in her official capacity as the liaison and reporting back to us and saying what's going on, then I could understand it. I, I do not, uh, agree with after the fact going back and saying, well, she's been doing it, so let her continue doing it. We were not privy to what was going on. And I think that that's an issue. There were policies that were broken, so. I mean, if the board doesn't want to entertain it, then that's fine, that's what the board will do, but I think that that's unfortunate. Thank you, Ms. Gittens, okay, Ms. Giovinelli? Ms. Giovinelli, please unmute.
Okay, is that, all right. So my only thing is that I honestly forgot about it. She's correct, it was, I think it was discussed at some point, but, so, I mean, we don't get updates from that. So, I mean, my concern is with Ms. Morgan or Ms. Vaughn, the, you know, that are all county, would, somebody, would either one of them want that? Um, want one of those? I don't, I think we have to be really careful, um, on being on committees that are liaisons, that they're considered liaisons. I don't, I mean, it's different if you're taking your own time and doing things. Like, I do the board of realtors, but that's because I'm on there because I'm a realtor. I'm not on it for, uh, as a, a school board member, and I don't represent that at all. So I think we have to be a little cautious now, um, because I mean, the list, like Ms. Patrica said, the list is very long already, but I mean, I think we have to be conscientious. We've got some people that have four and five, um, they're spreading themselves very thin. They got four or five, um, things that they've signed up for, so I think we just have to be careful.
Absolutely, thank you very much. So, Ms. Patrica, are you representing, are you on that as, as the district three school board member, right? And you do provide updates?
I, I, I do, I, I mean, I provide regular updates to the board going back as far as June of 2017, and, um, I, I appreciate Ms. Giovinelli's suggestion that it be a district-wide representative, but frankly, I've worked really, really, really hard with the Village of Astero to create this task force and to create the MOU that the entire board agreed to enter into, and that MOU specifically states that there is a task force. It would be deeply disappointing to me at this point to, um, lose that position, because I do live here, and, um, I, I have significant interaction with the people that live here. I also have significant interaction with, uh, community leaders down here. So, um, bottom line is that there's, there is, uh, a lack of agreement surrounding what got us to this point. My question is, how do we move forward? And I believe that having this discussion is the way for this board to move forward.
Thank you, Ms. Patrica, Ms. Morgan, then Ms. Vaughn.
Uh, I simply wanna say that knowing the people in Astero, knowing the, uh, town council, the members of the town council, knowing what they, their ambition for that, um, town has been for the past five years, they courted Ms. Patrica because they wanted to create this foundation, and they have worked very, very hard with her to, um, flesh out the education initiative that they are doing. I personally would not want to step into that role, because much as I admire the work they've done and as much as I, I know all of them, I don't, I don't have the relationship that Ms. Patrica has. I don't think, I think we need to have conversations long-term when we talk about the school board and community outreach, whether we want to establish responsibilities for board members to have those relationships. But we haven't had that conversation, so my feeling is at this point that Ms. Patrica continue to do what, what she has done, just as Ms., um, Giovinelli does the realtors, because that is her profession and she, she has the relationships. Um, that, those are my comments, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan, and now Ms. Vaughn. I would, because it's after six o'clock, and I think this is very important. Uh, and Mary, whatever made you think we would do this in ten minutes? Uh, I would like to make a motion. I would like to. I, I would like to make a motion that, now I'm trying to remember the lessons that we.
Okay, this is a workshop, so we don't need a motion.
Oh, we can't, okay. How can I then ask, request that we put it off? Because this is very important, and, um, for five minutes on why it's important, but I'm not going to at this hour. Uh, there are issues. I had some issues, Ms. Gittens had some issues. I never knew that Ms. Patrica was even appointed to that via.
Well, that would, yes, yes.
It predated when I was on the, on the board, and frankly, we haven't gotten, um, regular updates.
Right, and that was an agreement of the previous sitting board, and we don't undo.
It hasn't.
It hasn't been on the list. I, I think it should be on the list, but this is a longer discussion. And, yes ma'am, I would like to put it off to our next workshop, to our next workshop, or, or whatever works in. So we can actually all express our views on it and, um, have a discussion, because right now it will be just a rush thing.
Thank you, so, Ms. Bruno, um, we can put it off to our next workshop and then ask to have it on the agenda for our next workshop. Um, Susan, do you hear that?
Yes, ma'am, my dear.
I don't, I don't understand what it is we're putting off. All I'm asking for is board recognition that I serve as liaison to the task force. If we wanna have a broader discussion about expansion of these, um, agreements to other parts of the county, I think that's an important discussion to have.
Right, and I think the issue is that you're representing the board, and so I think we just wanna, um, make sure that everyone has a clear understanding that you will. that everyone has a clear understanding that you will be reporting back, um, periodically regarding that. And in the meantime, we're gonna entertain Ms. Bruno, because she has a comment, and I'd like to hear her legal opinion.
There's just two... This is two questions. The first question is, there is an MOU that is signed between the District and the Village. So, we really do need to have an official liaison to that. So, that's... That's the first question. The second question, obviously, is who's going to do that? Um, and what has happened in the past, the Board can discuss that. So, given the time, I don't know if... If, um, Madam Chair, you know, those are the separate questions. So, I don't know if you wanna address one of those questions or just move everything to the next workshop. It's... It's the Chair's call.
Yeah, and... And I think it would be best, considering the hour, and I know that we're really running over, um... I... I think that we should move it to the next workshop. So, is... And, uh, all in agreement, um, Board Members? Okay, so, one, two, three, four. Ms. Patrica?
I can live with it.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Gittens? I couldn't hear you, ma'am.
That's fine, I had a comment overall, but that's okay. Go ahead.
Thank you, okay.
I just... I would really like to say, the issue to me is a conflict of interest. Ms. Patrica has said several times, she lives there, she's a member of the community. There is a conflict of interest involved with that when we're talking about finance and money.
Yes, so I think then, since we have decided that we'll move to the next workshop where this is a longer discussion, uh, we'll... We'll put it off for... Till later. Okay, so, at this point in time... It is, um, 6:07 PM. Does anybody have anything for the good of the order? And I'm holding my breath as I ask that question. Okay, Ms. Giovanni? Ms. Giovanni has nothing. Ms. Patrica? Nothing, okay. Um, Ms. Jordan's not here. I have nothing. Um, Ms. Gittens?
I just do not want it to go by the wayside that I discussed in the beginning about the census position. I'm not gonna hold everybody here, but it was just said that we would discuss it later. I don't know when later.
Yes, and I do have it right here, so at this...
So, we can discuss it later, but that's fine. I just want it noted that I would like to make a statement about it.
Okay, so that's two things for the next workshop.
Yeah, can we just add those together, 'cause they're... They're similar in nature?
Yes, yes, thank you very much, okay. Um, then, um, Ms. Vaughn? Anything for good of the order? Thank you, and Mrs. Morgan? I have nothing. Thank you very much, okay. Uh, in that case, seeing no other business, uh, this workshop is adjourned, and thank you, uh, to Mrs. Cook and to Cindy McClung for being excellent facilitators and being patient with us today. And thank you, Ms. Bruno. Superintendent Atkins? Have a good evening.
You, too.